Well, good evening, everyone. So, Councilor Barrett will not be participating tonight, and I'll be acting as chair for the evening. The first order of business is a pledge of allegiance. Do you like allegiance?
Oh, we need a flag.
Oh.
Thanks. My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Instructions on exiting building in case of emergency and review of technology options. Jesse Baker, City Manager.
Thank you. Uh, so for those in the room, thank you for joining us. If there's an emergency during the meeting, um, in the room, you can go out the rear of the auditorium, on the left or right side, and then turn left or right to get outside. For those participating online, thank you for joining us as well. If you'd like to speak during any, um, agenda item on tonight's agenda, you can turn your camera on and the chair will call on you. Or you can indicate that you'd like to speak in the chat, and I will have the chair call on you. Other than that, we are not monitoring the chat for content.
Agenda review. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes in order of the agenda items? Hearing none. Comments and questions from the public not related to the agenda? Please.
Uh, yes, my question is-
Oh, please state your name.
Uh, Michael Metag. I'm a resident, twenty-odd-year resident of South Burlington, my planning commissioner. And I'm the treasurer of the South Burlington Land Trust. And a founding member. Um, my question relates to the Hubbard, uh, Natural and Recreation Area. And I wonder if we could hear an update on where we are in the process of conveying, uh, conservation easement.
Jesse, you want it?
Status.
So, we have been prioritizing the engineering. Uh, we have not heard from the Vermont Land Trust in a while, or the Lake Champlain Land Trust about their interest in conserving, but I can certainly poke them again.
Uh, yeah, they did express an interest, so I think a follow-up with them would be great. Thank you.
Please. Either there, or you can sit in front. Just turn the, um, make sure the green light's on. Yeah, sure.
Is the green light on? Am I okay?
No. Bright green.
Thank you.
There you go.
I'm Deppel, and I live on Imperial Drive, and, um, I have a question that I've spoken with some of the, um, various, uh, city, um, employees about, but I wondered if I might, if we might, um, get some, uh, timeline for resolution. So, um, the, the problem is that we are, um, caught in an electrical upgrade issue. We need an electrical upgrade because we have an older home that was built in sixty-five. It currently has a, a direct buried hundred amp service. And to, um, upgrade our home for energy efficiency, which we've been trying to do, the, we're apparently required to put in another buried line for the two-hundred-amp service, um, which the, the cost we've been quoted is quite prohibitive. So, um, it seems inequitable, given that, um, about a third, a little over a third of the homes on our block, on our street, have aerial lines. And there's a large aerial line that comes from a transformer, and the recently installed Burlington Telecom, telecom lines are also aerial. And so, we are wondering what the resolution might be, and when we might hear about that, given that we're waiting for, um, we're, we're hoping for one of the rebates. And it, there is a, a time pressure on that.
So, Jesse, correct me if I'm wrong, you'd mentioned that we're gonna be discussing that perhaps tonight, or a future?
So, we can give you a brief update tonight, but Tina's here and could speak about this current status quickly now, if, if you don't want to wait.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Hi, Bettina Miguez, Climate Action Manager. So, we have been looking into this issue. This resident is not the only one that has brought this up. And what, um, what we're trying to figure out is how many, uh, residents might be in the same position. So, we have some, um, screenshots of Green Mountain Power, uh, service lines, that indicate buried lines with a dash line, or solid lines, aerial lines. And I personally have been going neighborhood by neighborhood, trying to, um, quantify how many of the houses have dash lines versus, um, solid lines, but also matching that with our residential data, so that we can figure out. Um, we can also cross that with when they were built, so that we know, um, conduit started being required in nineteen eighty-eight. So, potentially, all the houses built after nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine, say, um, would have conduit. That does not mean that the conduit would be appropriate for an upgrade, but at least it's another, um, category. And, but any houses that have buried service that were built before that date would probably be in this situation. Um, and so, that is a process that I'm been going through. For now, I've completed most of the northeast quadrant of the city. And I wanted to have a number for you, but this is, this is fresh off the press.
Yeah, no, we, we don't necessarily need all the detail right now, but I guess at a, a future agenda item, when Bettina's ready, we'll have the detail, and presumably some, uh, differences in cost, and some recommendations, and-
So, the reason Bettina's, exactly, the reason Bettina's doing the analysis like this is, um, uh, this is currently in our ordinance, in our regulations. So, to change would require an ordinance update, so we're trying to understand if an ordinance change was made, what that impact would be on number of households, on costs, et cetera.
So, that, that's where we are, and I guess at a future, um, council meeting, we'll have more detail and more information for you.
Just a quick question about this. My understanding, I dealt with this, uh, with someone just two years ago. But my understanding is that the ordinance says that, that any upgrade to services are required to go underground now. So that if you're overhead now, and you have a hundred-amp service, and you wanna go to a two-hundred-amp service, you need to go to an underground. Even the overhead folks have to go underground. Is that correct?
So, that is an interpretation of the ordinance.
That's what it was interpreted to me from planning.
I, I think-
That is part of what we're looking at.
I think, so, honestly, I think it makes sense to let staff do their job, and provide us the data, the detail, the copy of the ordinance, we can all look at it. So, we can have, cause I've never seen it, we can have a, you know, a full, a fulsome discussion.
The, the scope of the issue is bigger if it's not just the underground.
Well, let's, let's-
And, and if I may add, that we're also looking at, um, with Efficiency Vermont, I've been in contact with them to look at whether these panel upgrades are always necessary, whether this service upgrade from a hundred to two-hundred amp is always necessary. That's what an electrician might tell you, but is that actually needed based on usage, et cetera? So, we're also looking at that angle. Um, and I did wanted to say about, I found about two-hundred-and-eighty, um, houses, units, um, that, in the northwest quadrant for now, that have underground buried service.
For you right now, but it is something that obviously is getting some attention.
Should we anticipate further discussion at the next meeting?
Unlikely, at the next meeting.
Can I add just one? I, I appreciate that, cause I think this is a bigger conversation, but I do know from correspondence from, uh, the residents, that there was just a concern about the incentives. And if, if it's appropriate, if we could be asking the utility, if there's any reason to expect those incentives might sunset within what timeframe? That would be helpful to our residents to understand that.
And I, I believe you're in touch with Bettina, so we would be happy to keep you updated, and let you know when it will come back on a council agenda.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment, please?
Is that it?
Yep.
My name is Chip Hansen, and I wanted to address the board about the use of the, you're, wanted to build a one-way street at the end of Market down here to connect to the Midas Shop parking lot. There was a road proposed to go through that small piece of undeveloped land. Are we familiar with that? There's a new road gonna be put in, next to the Section Eight housing.
Garden Street?
What is it called?
Garden Street?
Yeah, and it's gonna connect, uh, it's like some little tiny loop. Has that been approved? Because we'd like to discuss that. We'd like to keep that land as a, um, an animal-bird sanctuary, because of its propensity for the amount of animals and songbirds that live in that park, that it could be used as parkland, cleaned up with the trash that's in there from the residents. Over a hundred people use that path to go from Section Eight housing over to Price Chopper. And I, being one of them, use it two to three times a day. You putting in a road is gonna destroy an animal sanctuary, and a bird sanctuary. And I'm talking about all, every animal except bears have been seen in there, from, from possums to deer, to, to, uh, at least twenty varieties of songbirds. And I think putting that road in is a big mistake, and that money could be used for something else, including housing or improvements in that area. And I don't think that one sixteenth of a mile of a road is gonna make any difference to traffic in that area.
So, if, if you would like to reach out to me, I'm Jesse Baker, I'm the City Manager, jaybaker@thesouthbirlingtonvt.gov website ending. Um, I'd be happy to put you in touch with the project manager, her name's Alana on that project, but I'd be happy to connect you with her.
Okay, cause I just, I didn't know if it was, being as you were doing this thing tonight about parks and open spaces, that being an open space, we wanted to stop this, you having to lay pavement in there, or, or lighting, and whatever else you're gonna have to do in there for security, and just leave it as it is, and turn it into a, into a small park. Okay. So, you'll be, how do I, do I leave my name with you, or?
Um, I'll, can I come down and get your contact information?
Sure, of course.
Right after this? Can you stick around for like five minutes?
Yeah.
Any other public comment? Okay. Counselors' announcements and reports on committee assignments and city managers' report. Elizabeth, you wanna start?
Sure. Um, I attended the April second school board meeting, and, um, the steering committee meeting was, um, uh, brought up, that I think is, um, firmed up for June fourth, I believe. And, uh, there was some discussion on, um, uh, all resident voting, and, um, I did, uh, suggest to the superintendent that, um, they look for the two school representatives on that charter committee to update the school board in the future. I participated in the, uh, representing council on the police advisory team, um, which, if people haven't seen it yet, this is the brochure that will be going out later this week, Jesse, is that right? Yes, I'll pass that around for my colleagues to take a look at, very, um, professional. And our consultants were really impressed with the work that was done by city staff, um, in terms of moving that along. Um, and then, um, what was the other, uh, sorry? Looking at my notes. And I think that was it on my note since, um, since our last meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Lori?
So, um, I hope that everybody has been able to stop in at the senior center th- this evening to take part in the Parks and Open Space Master Planning Process. There was a great crowd there tonight. Say it. It's, oh, get closer. Sorry. There was a great crowd there tonight, and, um, I think it's getting started really well. There was an NRCC meeting on the second. Got an update on the Red Rocks Park stormwater and parking and path upgrades that are hopefully gonna be, uh, starting in the fall of twenty-twenty-five, or spring of twenty-twenty-six. And there were some more inputs that the NRCC has for the open space, uh, team. I just wanna make sure I got everything. There was a discussion about noise pollution, and whether it was appropriate for the NRCC to be looking at and addressing noise pollution as a, uh, issue relating natural resources and conservation. And a question about how involved they should be, and whether they should be taking direction from council on that. But that's a discussion that they have started. Community gardens, there are gonna be twenty-four new community gardens put into J.C. Park this spring, which is quite exciting, and, um, there was a lot of concern about making sure that, uh, private land, uh, is included in the open space plan, and that aspirational management plans for private property that is open would be included. And I think that is it for me tonight.
Thank you, Lori. Mike?
Yes, uh, since the last city council meeting, I attended, uh, South, uh, Green Mountain Transit, uh, Board Meeting, as we continue to navigate the seemingly endless financial twists, the latest being, as, as we've heard in so many other areas, uh, uh, federal cuts when it comes to transportation money. Uh, as I think I, I may have mentioned, but I just wanna be sure, as before, the funding for electric buses is, is gone, so that's no longer an option. And the question then becomes, will there be a funding element for diesel, which has been the traditional option? So, uh, that was a, 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 a big, uh, un- unknown, and we'll have to see how we adjust to it, as, as, as in so many other areas. I also attended a, uh, CCRPC meeting, uh, with, as, as the backup. And, uh, there the focus was, and if people haven't seen it, uh, go online, it's, the focus of that meeting was about Chittenden County housing targets, and how to basically achieve, uh, the targets that have been set out for the twenty-thirty to twenty-fifty time period. A couple interesting, the, the targets that are, are laid out are from a low to a high, so let me just, uh, throw them out. If people haven't heard them, but you can find this online. South Burlington is at the, the front, uh, for this target, with, uh, the low estimate, the low target being three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight, which would be a thirty-eight percent growth in housing in South Burlington in this twenty, uh, from now, twenty-five-year time period, with the high-end target being a hundred-and-fifteen percent growth, which would be eleven-thousand-three-seventy-eight. The next two closest municipalities in, in the same of that, and that sort of area, are Essex Junction, which was a thirty percent increase and eighty-nine percent increase, if you go low to high, and the same number was set out for Wilson. For me, it was also just interesting to just get a better sense of how Chittenden County as a whole is viewed. When you, when you talk about cities, which will be the focus for sixty percent of the housing target, they're defined as Burlington, Essex Junction, South Burlington, and Winooski. Rural towns are defined as three-point-eight percent of Chittenden County. And, uh, what they call as, uh, a mixed sort of suburban towns, as they call them, being Colchester, Essex Junction, Heinsberg, Jericho, Milton, Richmond, Selvin, Wilson, are thirty-six percent. And, and, uh, the, the focus obviously is to emphasize the housing in the three areas that I mentioned, and including Winooski, though, has limited growth possibilities. But anyways, the, 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 the discussions are, these are numbers that are out there, this is the beginning of a discussion process, so there'll be, uh, many opportunities for people to attend hearings, they're gonna come to the various municipalities. So, uh, you know, this is, uh, I would encourage people to keep an eye out for it, and to participate, as, uh, Lori said, you know, with the same hopeful, same enthusiasm that we're seeing here at our, the master plan, uh, meeting and gathering to get feedback from the community, cause, you know, it's supposed to reflect our, our, our collective views. Uh, I also then, uh, attended-
Mike, can I interrupt really quickly? So, the planning commission will take up those housing targets tomorrow night at their regular meeting, and you'll hear, you'll, uh, receive a presentation on them at your first meeting in May.
So, the public definitely, but the goal here is also to get feedback, and they're gonna, you'll see it, the announced opportunities for the public to participate. So, go online to the CCPRC webpage, and I would encourage everyone to participate, and chime in. I also attended the, uh, Lake Champlain, uh, chamber, uh, breakfast, legislative breakfast at the airport. I must admit, it was pretty cool. Uh, they took us behind, uh, into the airport, and we were at a gate, and basically a future gate, uh, and had a meeting there. What was very interesting, and I think we've all seen it, reminded how lucky we are in terms of the, the, the time to get through, uh, the, the controls that we all need to go through, is four minutes on average. Uh, and having just flown, uh, to a couple, uh, vacation spots with my family on the weekend, I must admit, of all the airports we went through, this was definitely the easiest. It was really impressive s- speech given by, uh, Niklongi, who will be speaking to us. But, uh, I, I didn't realize how large the operation is. The econ- economic activity around the airport is about a billion dollars, which if you think of the whole activity of our state, that's, uh, about one-tenth. Uh, there are about six thousand employees associated with either the airport or organizations that are on the airport property, or service the airport. Good news is, uh, they said that, uh, they have basically been able to acquire what's called sustainable aviation fu- fuel, which is basically a, a much, uh, better fuel when it comes to emissions control, and one of the first airports in, uh, New England to, to gain this access to the fuel. Uh, in fact, in terms of overall activity, in terms of flowing of flights, we're the second after Boston Logan. But at the moment, you know, they are going under, and I think as people are aware, a big renovation job, adding uh, another terminal, and the terminal will be, uh, based, will be net zero. And so, I think, uh, for, overall, it was just very impressive to hear the operations. And, and also very directly for us, is that we're net benefactors of it because of the local option tax, uh, that is generated there, or the property tax that is paid by other various business operations that are on their lands, all come and help us meet the services that we all value, as well as be able to strive for some ambitions that we all have in our city plan. Uh, then I also had a, also what was interesting, just from a comparative standpoint, the mayor of Burlington was there, and as we all know, it's the airports in South Burlington, but it is Burlington's. Uh, and, uh, she spoke about, uh, her vision. But what she pointed out is that they're still having, uh, serious headwinds. They have still an eight-million-dollar gap they have to fill in their budget. And added to that, the general churn that's, uh, unknown about federal funds, uh, she pointed out that, uh, Burlington would be reviewing what are the core services, and what are the core commitments they need to make. And I got a feeling, uh, going forward, that it's probably not a bad exercise for us to do as well. And the last, uh, was sort of a sad but joyous occasion, uh, was the Chief Burke's farewell. Uh, you know, he's been quite a treasure for this, uh, city in terms of what he's created. He's left behind a fabulous police force, even though it's, uh, down a third of its staff, it still provides great service to all of us. And as, uh, I think Jesse said in her remarks, we're also very fortunate that he's not going far, he's just going down the road. And, and obviously, we are all ultimately connected to each other, municipality-wise, that, you know, the good service that he'll bring to Burlington, I'm sure will serve us well as, uh, 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 indeed. That's it, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, so I've been away quite a bit, and uncharacteristically will not have much to report. So, I will thank my colleagues for their reports, and cede my time to our city manager.
Andrew, I have one other point that I-
Oh, please.
Need to mention, and, um, just a bit of concerning news that I received today that may impact our school system, and I wonder how it impacts all of us. Zoe Saunders just sent an email to all of the, uh, school districts, saying that they have to, they have ten days to verify that they are in compliance with the new DEI regulations from the federal government. And I think it's, um, something that we need to understand what the impacts are gonna be for our community. And I don't know if we wanna get a report from the school dis- from the, uh, school board, or what, what we can do to help support, um, our schools at this time.
Yeah, I, I have a conflicting email with that, Lori, that just came, that Zoe Saunders and Charity Clark, the Vermont Attorney General, released a statement that says, "With advocacy from the Vermont Principals Association, Vermont Superintendent's Association, and Vermont School Board Association, as of late this afternoon, I can now report that superintendents are no longer being asked to provide individual certifications." So, that may be breaking news.
That is breaking news, thank you.
I share your concern. More to come. More to come.
I, I can forward this, um, press release on to you as well.
That would be great, thank you.
Um, thank you. A few updates from us, um, thanks to those in the room, um, and those online who are watching later, who attended the Parks and Open Space Master Plan event this af- this evening, it was great. Um, and just a reminder that tomorrow evening in this room is a similar, um, effort for the Economic Development Strategic Plan. All the committee members are invited, but of course, the public as well. Thank you for the nice comments about Chief Burke's send-off, it was a bittersweet but lovely event. I really appreciate so many of you attending. As Counselor Fitzgerald mentioned, the advisory team met for the first time last week. Uh, we're scheduling listening sessions now through the first week in May, and we'll issue the brochure this week. Chief Locke was gonna mention a fire, cool fire update.
We've, effective April first, we changed a deployment model, where no longer does a fire truck respond on every medical call with an ambulance. So, we have instituted with computer-rated dispatch, we're able to, um, categorize events as a medical or a medical high priority. So, the dispatcher will ti- pick a medical high priority, if it's chest pain, difficulty breathing, childbirth, trauma, uh, needs a police op- if a police officer's responding, and I'm, altered mental status. I think it's si- those six call types. If those words, you know, "I'm having difficulty breathing," that's gonna get more people show up, those are typically more serious incidents. We believe it'll reduce our unit movements by about fifty percent.
Wow. That's, that's a big change.
Can you put a dollar figure on that? I mean, obviously, what's good is you're still prioritizing, you know, safety response to real emergencies. But any sense of the, the revenues?
Uh, so, so it'll be no re- no decrease in revenue. I think the savings ultimately comes from hopefully an extended, like, you know, the, fire trucks now, that, that ladder truck is, um, one-point-six million. Um, and it's running, you know, running the tires off it on medical calls. And so, what we're trying to do is to get, um, extend our life of our vehicles, to be quite honest, extend the life of our people, um, and picking and choosing on what calls we really need them on. And so, there are some, also some other parameters. If the, if the primary ambulance is gonna be more than eight minutes away, then it will send the closest fire truck. If a mutual aid ambulance is coming in, it's gonna send a fire truck. If it's going over by the airport, uh, District Seven, what we call it, which is the air guard responding, it's gonna send a fire truck. So, we, we built all these parameters in, and at the end of the day, if the officer reads the notes and says, "I should go on this run," then they're gonna go. But I don't, can't answer the call, the dollar savings. But it ultimately is gonna be significant.
So, I recall we had discussion like this a year ago or so. And I don't remember exactly where it came out, but a- at the time, um, I think the conclusion was, we need to nonetheless send a fire truck. So, has standard practice changed, or we have more information now about the nature of the call, or?
Well, so, we're about eighteen months into using CAD, this would not be eligible, this would not be work without computer-rated dispatch. Um, and so, we've, between having, investing in the technology, um, investing really in the, the education of our staff. Um, you know, fifty percent of our staff have less than three years on the job, so it's, is a very junior staff. Uh, so, I think we, and it really was waiting for all those right components to come in.
That's, that's great, so the technology was paid off, has paid off, great.
Uh, thank you, Steve. Uh, two other quick updates, we had two new firefighters and a new city arborist start today. We're very excited to welcome them to the- Thank you, Steve. Two other quick updates. We had two new firefighters and a new city arborist start today. We're very excited to welcome them to the team. And then just a reminder, Green Up Day is May 3rd. It's one of our favorite, favorite days, favorite activities. Green Up Day bags are now available in the clerk's office. If folks want to come pick them up and drop off will be at 577 Dorset on May 3rd. That's what I had. Thanks.
Thank you, Jesse. Moving on to item six, the consent agenda, agenda. I will need a motion to consider and sign dispersments to authorize the city manager and finance director to reassign 70,000 from the fire department's fiscal year 2025 capital investment plan, 60,000 for monies allocated toward the purchase of a powered patient loading system and 10,000 for monies allocated towards the purchase of thermal imaging cameras for the purchase and outfitting of a new fire department tow slash utility vehicle. To award the engineering design contract for Heinsberg Road Shared Use Path to VHB, to approve the updated local emergency management plan as presented and to approve the emergency, updated local emergency management plan as presented. So a motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just said, I had asked a couple of questions and wanted to clarify that because of the accelerated receipt of the truck, correct Steve, that the need for the powered patient loading system was diminished because that's can be received earlier and that the utility vehicle that is being proposed for redeployment of funds is in the, was in, within a year or two of the CIP, correct? And then I did, I did ask for clarification on the local emergency plan. Can someone, probably you Steve, just clarify why some religious institutions are included in some childcare facilities, but not all. I'm sorry, I'm gonna.
That's okay.
Direct it the other way.
Chris Corbin, Deputy Fire Chief. So we could list every single childcare facility, every single church. What we try to do in that document is number one, find high hazards, so large population, in that case of children for the childcare facilities. And then the religious locations that we listed are commonly religious locations that we see people gathering for other things other than just religious activities. So more social gathering as well. Those facilities we've seen in the past, both here and regionally, nationally, as locations for those religions that people go during a crisis, during an emergency, or just to gather in a social atmosphere. So we chose those kind of considering where we thought those groups of people would go in a, in a community emergency.
That's helpful. It just looked like it, it came across as sort of selectively picking and I didn't know what the rationale was. So thank you for explaining.
Yeah, I'm sure it did. And if we listed everything, we'd have a 30-page document. Any other questions on the vehicle or not while I'm right here?
I do not.
Okay.
Any other discussion? So I have a motion and a second. If anyone approves, say aye. Aye. So that's unanimous with one absence. Counsel Barrett is absent. Moving on to item seven, approve resolution 2025 to seven declaring April 2025 as fair housing month. Do we have the housing committee to? Hello.
Thank you.
Just Nora, just.
I'm Nora Sonical. I'm Chair of the Housing Committee. So Fair Housing Month commemorates the 1960 Act, 1968 Fair Housing Act, which prohibits discrimination in housing. And it's a month-long community outreach, outreach and education that's sponsored by various communities, community groups, libraries, the Champlain Valley Office of Opportunity, Economic Opportunity plays a big role in this and we will be sponsoring a book discussion at the library called The Housing Crisis on April 16th from 6:30 to 8:00.
Thank you. Do you want to read the resolution? Would you?
Would you like me to read it as the council liaison?
Sure.
Alright, happy to. Let it be known to all persons that the City of South Burlington wishes to join with the State of Vermont and the United States in affirming and celebrating the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968, which serves as a powerful statement about who we are as a people and the values of equality, equity and dignity that we strive to uphold. Whereas Vermont extends these protections to people of all ages, marital status, gender identity, sexual orientation, sources of income, and people who have experienced abuse, sexual assault and stalking as protected classes. And whereas Vermont took the further step to ensure fair housing by prohibiting discrimination against housing developments in land use and planning decisions based on the income of intended residents. And whereas inclusive, welcoming and affordable communities promote diversity in a climate conducive to equitable and thriving communities. And whereas the City of South Burlington supports the efforts of fair housing organizations, concerned citizens and the housing industry to create broader housing opportunities for households of all incomes throughout the region. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of South Burlington, Vermont hereby proclaims the month of April to be Fair Housing Month and urges all individuals, institutions and agencies to contribute to the observance by continuing our efforts to eliminate housing discrimination in our community and to increase housing opportunities for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I move to approve the Fair Housing Month resolution.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 That's unanimous with one absence.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nora. Moving on to item eight, receive an update on the climate related fiscal year 25 and fiscal year 26 capital projects. Patina Miguez, Climate Action Manager.
Patina, are you gonna sign into Zoom and share your screen or are you expecting me to do that? Okay. Give me one quick minute. That's fine. Sorry about that. You're doing CIP first?
Yes. Thank you. So again, Patina Miguez, Climate Action Manager. And this presentation wants to show what were the money that had been allocated towards climate action related items, what, what were we doing with that and what the impact of those investments are? So this is what was in the Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 25 and then also for what was approved for fiscal year 26. This whole presentation is a little bit convoluted because there are light items that refer to several things, et cetera. So I'll try to be as clear as possible. But basically we can think about it as there were a couple of line items that related to climate action transportation in fiscal year 25. And then there were a couple of, and then there were quite a few line items that had to do with the government operations. So that's the municipal buildings, municipal fleet, all, all the city related investments. And so first I'm gonna talk about the government operations side and then I'll talk about the transportation side. And then after that, I want to talk about some items that were not in the Capital Improvement Plan, but they're also climate related, even if they weren't specifically called that way. So for, oh, one back. So for the climate action items that were in the CIP, we have $505,000 allocated in FY25 and then another 345 for FY26. So government operations, what, what do we mean by that? We mean buildings with arization. We mean HVAC in buildings. So trying to switch to heat pumps whenever possible. We also consider small equipment and studies that help make decisions. And then also, as you know, vehicles trying to look at hybrid options or electrification options for some of our fleet, as well as installation of EV charging ports that can help support that electrification. And just, oh, one, sorry. No, 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 that's fine. Just that graph there shows our energy use for the city operations. So this is not the City of South Burlington as a whole. It's just the City of South Burlington, the municipal government. And as you can see, quite a bit of it is electric and then also natural gas. But we still have a big component of gasoline and diesel. And these are the trends looking at fiscal years 20 to 24. And what I want to highlight here is that in fiscal year 22 would be the move to this building. And so that means, that's why we have a higher electricity use and a lower natural gas use as well. We have in our climate action plan, we have some targets that we've set. As you know, reduced by 40% by 2030 from the 2019 baseline. Last year, there was a government operations implementation plan that was developed by staff and we are on track with that plan. What the blue line would be the goal if proportionally we've reduced our emissions by 40% by 2030. The red line is what was identified as plausible with, without any significant, and when I say significant, I mean millions of dollars in investment in, in climate action for the city operations. And so, and the gray line is where we think we are at this point. So we're a little bit below what that plan said. We're on track. Well, I'll, I'll talk about that at the end. But we're on track with that plan. We're not necessarily on track to meet the 2030 targets that we set. So buildings, fiscal year 25, this is the Public Works Building. Three of their rooftop units were replaced, so 15 out of 21 tons of the capacity that was done with a grant. So they were just replaced. If we were to put those units at a 27 degree Fahrenheit set point, so that means at the point at which you would switch to using the natural gas backup system, you, we would have gas savings of almost 5,000 cubic units, but a greenhouse gas reduction of 26 and an annual cost. And all of it, all except for one item in this presentation are in thousands of dollars. There's one item in which I noticed that I didn't, that I added later and I did not put it. I put it in actual dollars, so not thousands of dollars. And I'll, I'll let you know when we get there. So, but if we were to put it at that set point, it would cost about a thousand dollars to operate, a thousand $200 because at that point you're using it at, you're using the heat pumps at us, the rooftop units at a slightly inefficient range. And so therefore what we're doing right now, we're not maximizing the greenhouse gas reduction. We are, we have it at probably around 32, I think, if I'm not mistaken. And that's about the break even point. And so that way we don't have to, when we switch, we don't have any additional electric cost. It's the break even point of operation, which also could potentially mean longer lasting equipment because we're not using it at the inefficient range. And then.
Just to make sure I understand the calculation. So the savings are net of the savings from not having to use gas.
Yes.
But the incremental cost of the electricity.
That's right.
You're saying at 32 degrees, those two things are.
32 degrees, those two things are exactly, are break even. And so the D H G, the actual greenhouse gas reduction is a little bit less than that 26 that is shown there. This is just at what, at the point that the calculation was performed. And then for fiscal year 26, there's a bit packaged being prepared. There's gonna be a, a facility expansion and they're gonna set up about 10 EV chargers as well. We're gonna replace the two other RTUs that were not replaced last year. The RTUs that were grant funded, that is a federal grant. We have not received the money yet. We have been asking for the money. We hope to receive the money. And that's about as much information I can give. And when I say for fiscal year 26, $25,000 from EPRF, I mean the Energy Project Revolving Fund, which I think a few meetings, meetings ago, we presented about that with Lou Brizzy. So that's that acronym there. Police. This is where in the yellow, that 1,200, that's actually $1,200 is not thousands of 12,000, of $1,200. So that should be really 1.2 in that yellow. But basically there were some windows that were replaced. The weather, that would be part of a weatherization project. The weatherization projects are typically have been fairly small. And so it, it is not easy to calculate beforehand how much of a savings you'd have from doing such an action. However, we are tracking building by building energy use. And so if, if there is a substantial reduction, we would see it. Many of the weatherization projects that would be substantial would be something like replacing a roof or those kinds of things. And those are not right now in the works. But in any case, going back to the boilers, the boilers are to be replaced sometime in 2025. It might be summer. To purchase high efficiency boilers, it would have cost, to purchase the highest efficiency boilers, it costs $58,000. The current, the boilers at the current efficiency would have cost $43,000. So we can say that the climate related cost is $15,000. But the payback in terms of, because of the higher efficiencies, about 4.6 years. That does not include a potential rebate of $1,200 per boiler from efficiency Vermont because we're getting boilers that are even higher efficiency than code.
So just to be clear, so the, the 58 does not include the rebate?
Right. The payback, the payback of 4.6 was not calculated using any rebates.
No, no, I'm saying the $58,000 cost.
The $58,000 cost also does not include a rebate. Does not include a rebate.
Is there uncertainty about receiving that rebate?
I would. I don't know. I would. I don't wanna say that we would get a rebate, if we actually, if we actually get the rebate. I think VGS would have it. There might be some issue with getting the boiler we actually wanna get, when we wanna get it and that it is that 94%, but I don't know. If, if there's any doubt that we will get the rebate.
Just.
No? No, there's no doubt. I, I mean, part of the issue might be that the contract awarded, the wording might be that they are already including that rebate for themselves and not necessarily for us, if that makes sense. As in like, as part of the installation, they're saying, they're claiming the rebate. So that might be one of the issues, I guess.
I mean, actually, we'll have lots of questions on this, but just since we're going through it. And this is just really a question of presentation. If it's 58 net of a bunch of stuff.
No, no, no. 58 is without any rebates.
Right. I'm saying.
Right.
I, I guess it seems to me we should present it net so we know the true difference, right? I mean, it's not helpful to me to see little boxes. There's some other stuff we need to take. I mean, it's not helpful to me to see little boxes, there's some other stuff we need to take into account, right?
So I I agree that that is. That is true, I would say we found out about this rebate fairly late, so we did not go back and redo the calculation. But, you know, we can definitely redo that calculation.
I would say for for all of these, yeah, the numbers should be net, right, so we know what the true cost is.
Well, when we get to the fleet, we are uncertain about receiving the federal rebate in that case, which would. Um give us a question mark of what is actually gonna be the net.
I've got one more question on this.
Yeah.
I see that the existing boilers um are seventy five percent efficient and code is eighty two percent efficient. So. Having the climate related cost of fifteen thousand. We can't actually install a current, the current boiler efficiency because it's below code. So it'd be useful to, in terms of having the climate cost, if it was a boiler that was eighty two percent efficient cost. As opposed to the ninety four percent efficient cost, that would more accurately indicate what the climate extra is. Because we can, I believe we can't.
It might be a.
Below eighty two percent.
It might be a matter of wording and it would be um. It might be a a matter that we chose the wrong word, and it's not necessarily current deficiency, but, you know.
Okay.
The next.
So the current efficiency.
The minimum next thing we could get. Probably, but.
Thank you.
I'm not too sure, I would have to get back to you on that, but I'll find out. Fire department, so this is a minor weatherization improvement, um replacing the forefront doors. And improving some of the thermal seals and painting the doors as well to be fire red. Um so it'll be difficult to estimate the greenhouse gas reduction of that, as you know, those doors open quite a bit. Um but we'll keep an eye on that, and perhaps with fewer runs of the fire truck, we will see something.
Bettina, I I think I asked this, but particularly for weatherization projects, it sounds like you do have baseline information of utility costs. That would generate cost savings at a minimum regardless of the ability to estimate gas emission. Changes.
So we do, the way we calculate, we currently calculate the emissions. Is we you, we do that from the energy use data, and so that is what we're tracking. Um so if we see a change, a significant change in energy usage. In any of these buildings, that is how we would know what the actual um. Impact of that weatherization was, bearing any other operational changes within the building.
Thank you.
Vehicles, so there are four um Hyundai Kona's um that are electric that have been purchased. And. Again, sorry that this is not the net, this is um looking at the EV. So the investment, including all the fit up, and by fit up, we mean you have to paint, you have to um get the, all the. Lights, et cetera, um to be the city vehicle. That is a hundred and forty thousand, the an equivalent um gasoline powered cars, so similar type of um car. Uh would be a hundred and twenty eight thousand, so the climate related cost is um about twelve thousand. Again, thinking of typical mileage, the payback would be less than three years. Without any rebates, we do know that we're gonna get rebates, um and the greenhouse gas savings are also based on typical mileage. After doing this calculation and talking to some of the folks that might be using the new vehicles. I would say this might be a slight overestimate in terms of how much mileage they will get, at least a few of these vehicles. So we'll have to update you on on what the actual greenhouse gas savings are based on mileage, once we know. Um some of these cars do mostly, you know, within the city trips. And um they don't get to a typical use in a year.
So on this slide.
Hmm.
You show anticipated rebates of sixteen thousand eight hundred just from Vermont and GMP.
Right.
So does that mean that in fact, the climate related cost is a negative number, not a positive number?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so again, similar to the other one, I I just think the presentation here is not as clear as it can be, and I really, you you disagree.
I don't disagree, but I think you've made that point, we've chosen to present it this way, we would be happy to present it a different way in the future.
This is not the.
If you would like us to pause tonight, we could come back.
It's fine, yes, it's it's not, it's not the first time. Um the, just one other point on this, just so we're not losing track, so it says twenty from the revolving fund. And similar question for the police, I I just don't see that in the chart, the twenty from the revolving fund. Or the twenty five for the police in the revolving fund.
So the CIP in fiscal year twenty six did specify EPRF as a separate column. The FY twenty five did not, so that is why, that's one of the confusing factors. And to your point, I think one of the things I wanted to highlight by showing without the rebates is that these are investments that make sense. Even if you do not have all these other incentives. So I understand where you're coming from, and I and I and I get that. But I also think it's important to show that a lot of these investments pay for themselves, even if you don't have any other.
Which is, which is awesome, but I guess my point here, I'll just make it one last time. We're um explaining to the public a number that we're identifying as an incremental amount we're spending for climate. And I think that number is wrong, and I think it needs to be accurate.
Okay, I will take that into consideration for this budget season.
I would also, ju- I I wanna thank Bettina for picking up a very complicated CIP. That was built as we were, as we non-climate experts were trying to understand this and moving it forward and trying to articulate it. So I think this is a great conver- conversation to know how to make this incrementally better in the future. But I really appreciate how Bettina, in her third month, has really dove in to understand where we've been, where we are today. And where we could get better in the future.
This, this is not a critique of Bettina, so thank you, just and in terms of the um energy revolving fund, it is just a question of presentation. So next time we see this, it can kind of all meet our expectations. Um I guess I wouldn't have thought that we would have identified amounts coming from the revolving fund. As incremental costs. Because in my mind, right, because we have those cost, we we we've summed up all the costs, including the. In twenty six coming from the revolving fund as the climate action costs, right? We've just summed them up across, I would have thought if if the money came from the revolving fund, cuz it's money that was earned, right? So this is now contra-expense that it would net out and it wouldn't be a cost.
That is a way to present it, what is what he's looking at this slide, just so folks can follow. This is a snapshot of the city's ten year capital improvement plan spreadsheet. That shows what the expenditures are, there's a whole another complimentary portion of this spreadsheet. That talks about what the revenues are, where the monies are coming from to spend this, so I hear what you're saying, but I, but I.
So my perspective would be, I'm interested in see what others will think, because we're. We're becoming very precise in telling the public, this is what we're spending for climate action, you know? Different than what we're saying about all lots of other things in the city, I think, I think we should be very clear on what that means. And if there's a revenue source that is not taxes that we're using for that. Um in my own mind, it shouldn't be counted as an expense here, because the purpose of that revolving fund is you take the earnings from the revolving fund. And you spend it on climate action at no cost to the taxpayer.
No, I understand what you're saying, what I'm saying is, I think we as staff always have an obligation to tell you what a car is gonna cost. And then we may tell you what the different revenue streams are gonna go into that.
I totally agree, but this is more than that, this is identifying incremental climate action costs, not the cost of the car. What's the climate action cost, and here, because we're specifically using earnings from the revolving fund. I guess from my perspective, that's not an incremental climate action cost, that's a, that's um. The, you know, that's our intent, right, that's our purpose, that's why we set up the revolving fund to to take the earnings from the revolving fund for these climate actions.
So what I hear Andrew saying is, how do we have a sensitivity to our. Uh residents' concern about quote spending money on climate? When in fact, the money that we're spending is money that we've saved. And how do we, how do we present the information so that, not so that what we as council understand. But so that our constituents can see that this investment is actually. Saving money or using money that we wouldn't have had if we weren't going under this work. So that we hear, I mean, there's criticism in the paper all the time about we can't spend money on climate, we have to do something else. And how do we actually demonstrate that the money we're spending is, in fact, saving fiscally? So that that argument gets some clarification.
Yeah, and my my feeling on this is because that perception exists, in some ways, presenting it the way Bettina has chosen to. Does reflect, I think, an expectation of what a consumer would go through. When they're evaluating an investment in an EV vehicle, for instance, you're gonna net it out then, and it likely will be more at the outset. And then you're going to factor in the rebates, so I I almost think the. The net impact, which is a climate related cost, and then offset by rebates when they're realized, there may be a time value. But there's, there's an offset, then I think this, the sources of funding, which would include prior year savings. Which is, I think, what I'm hearing you and Andrew talk about, I I think that kind of transparency. Would help people understand the whole picture. Cuz if we did a, if we did a net that took all these moving parts and said, no, it doesn't cost you anything as a taxpayer. It doesn't show how we got there, and I think the path of how you get there is gonna be critical. And and some of that may change, is I guess the other point is, like, I mean, there's a big federal rebate in there.
Thirty thousand for federal, but I think for a lot of people, and I know when I'm just looking at somebody else's work. I look at the numbers in a very cursory way, and I look at this and say, oh, the climate, the climate work is costing me twelve thousand dollars. But in fact. It costs four thousand dollars less to buy the the quote climate vehicle. Than it does to buy by the non-climate vehicle, so at a quick glance, which is all most people give this. I see climate action is costing me twelve thousand dollars, rather than climate action is actually saving me four thousand dollars. And I want people to be able to quickly go, oh, doing this is actually saving me money. So that, so that it offsets that perception that everything you're doing is just costing me money. So, and I don't know how we do that, and this is just feedback for as it gets put together. And in no way a criticism of the work you've done, so I just wanna be clear about that.
Well, look, one thing we could do is, you know, uh some kind of gross, if we wanna make it complicated, and then the net. Yeah, I mean, I I don't personally don't, not sure the public's gonna digest all that, I I would probably just go with the net. But if folks think we should show the process, we can do that.
No, this is good feedback.
I just know that when people talk to me, they're like, why are we spending money on this? And when I can actually say, we're not actually spending money on it, we're actually saving money doing this.
But if I'm not mistaken, the savings go back into their uh reoccurring fund for the energy, as opposed to a saving and, let's say, some other way. Would go back into the general fund, correct?
Regardless, if these konas cost a hundred and forty thousand dollars versus the electric powered at one twenty eight. And there's sixteen thousand dollars in savings, it costs less to buy the konas, and it costs less to operate them, so.
But that sixteen thousand savings stays in the general fund or stays in this revolving fund for energy?
We haven't discussed that.
I didn't know, that's future, I mean, just to be really precise, right? Cuz I, cuz if you're really trying to maximize the savings, people will, I think, look at it, if we save these funds because we've chosen this network. We have more funds to do other things as well, so I think that would be the most strongly, to get to your point, is this is a strong reason to invest in this.
More funds to do more savings for what we really need to do here.
I think that's becomes the debate.
Yeah.
If, I think if you really looked at the cost of the taxpayer, just to focus on the konas, right? Um it's minus four, as Laurie said, minus twenty, because we've already earned the twenty. Minus probably thirty, cuz that is the law today, notwithstanding how this administration may try to throw sand in the gears. But I think eventually that thirty is gonna come through until Congress changes it prospectively, right? So that's probably, the konas are probably up to this point fifty four thousand dollars of savings. The future savings of using electricity rather than gas will then go back to the revolving fund, so I mean, it's like this. It's a huge win, and when people see it costs us twelve versus the reality of it saving us fifty plus and future savings. It's just, right, there's a, there's a dissonance there that I guess I'm trying to clarify.
I would like to point out that.
We'll we'll take comments, we'll take comments.
That EV infrastructure has to be taken into account too, and as I think one of the next slides shows. That's not, that that is a supporting, is is the support you need for these savings to happen. And to realize them, and they're not, it's not cheap. So, so you do have to take that into account, and so that's another layer that it's a little bit hard to explain perhaps. In terms of how much you put in, how much you get out.
Well, again, if it's all kind of presented on the same basis, and then it, you know, it adds up and the numbers are what the number is, but yeah. So you, Tina, you wanna keep going through?
Yeah, um police cruiser replacement, um it's a bit early still to estimate. Um what the savings are, um patrol cars are being replaced with non-plug-in hybrid vehicles. Um we um, we do not have um plug-in hybrid vehicles right now. Or or totally electric that meet the patrol car needs. And the current administrative vehicles that the police department has are relatively new, so. Eventually, as they are phased out, they will be replaced, um but for now, um it is the replacement. With just the non-plug-in hybrids, and that still has a benefit because it prevents emissions while they are idling. Um and we will be tracking the gas use as well, see if we see that. Uh as I mentioned, the installation of the EV chargers, so in fire station one, um that's hopefully gonna happen next fiscal year. And in public works, um these are big investments. Um but we think that they are important in order to be able to electrify the fleet. And be ready for the next generation of medium to heavy duty vehicles that might come. With the possibility of being electric. Um and so as a summary, um we have the buildings, the administrative vehicles. The police vehicles and the EV chargers, um the total funding, what actually came from the general fund. Um and then the projected savings in dollars per year. And the projected mitigation um in greenhouse gas emissions. Um and what I did wanna point, point out here is that that sixty, that would be for fiscal years twenty five and twenty six. Compared to about perhaps twelve. In terms of emissions, um equivalent, CO2 equivalent, um that were prevent, that were mitigated in fiscal year twenty four. So that is actually an increase, so we went from about twelve in fiscal year twenty four. And hopefully between twenty five and twenty six, another sixty, um and that is um, that is the right direction. The direction we wanna be going in, um. The direction we wanna be going in, um, so. And, and I do think that we'll have the infrastructure to, um, do more electrification. We'll have to see, um, what we can do depending on how the incentives play along and everything else. Um, so that's the government operations side. Now let's move on to the, um, transportation, there were two line items there, um, public transit, um, and inactive transportation. Uh, projects. Those, um, from fiscal year twenty five, um, the seventy five thousand dollars, it was from ARPA intended funds. There, they have been folded into the ARPA inspired funds, um, and so they are waiting for a project. And once that there is a project, then it would have to get approved by council. Um, and then the other hundred thousand, um, that were in the active transportation, um, also from ARPA intended funds. They were committed to sidewalk maintenance, um, um, and approved by council, uh, the end of last year. And in fiscal year twenty six, there were no expressly climate related items, um, in the CIP.
In the climate, in climate action plan and also in the city plan, what, what percentage of our emissions are related or tied to transport? And, and is that something that we're like trying to chip against?
Yes, so transportation, I should know the number by heart, but I do not, but it's forty something percent, um, of the citywide. Is transportation, um, the next one is thirty something with buildings, I should know, it's on the website now, but.
The largest one.
It is the largest one. But that's why I added the whole other section of the presentation, so if you go one more. Um, when, when back, I do wanna make this point that, so this funding, the projected savings, the projected mitigation. Is gonna be dependent on increased use of bike pedestrian infrastructure, and let's keep that in mind as we move to the next one. That should say transportation, not government operations. So there are other climate related expenditures, because really, as you're mentioning, Mike, um, any. Transportation related, um, investment that has to do with sidewalks. Or, um, bike infrastructure, or that has to do with, um, supporting, funding the public transit. Are all, um, part of what we need to do to really move us in the direction of reducing. Um, the dependence on, on, on gas, uh, vehicles, which is really what, you know, on single trips and. Um, I mean, single occupant trips and, and such, so. Um, I do wanna say, um, we do do, we do, um, spend money on studies. To try to make sure that we, uh, do the right investments, um, so there were some studies. On the police station heating alternatives, we ended up with the change of those boilers. Solar for public works, um, we have some preliminary estimates in the case of the roof is gonna. Um, in the case there's, uh, change in the roof, et cetera, um, and, uh, the chargers for electric vehicles as well. To see what do we need, how much is it gonna cost, have estimates so that we have those in the plan, um, next. Um, and, um, the hand-powered gasoline equipment has been changed to electric whenever feasible. Um, and so that has been several, several different, um, items, um, electric more. There's also an electric more, electric line strippers for pavement, um, and also for the field, that's a lease. Um, the greenhouse gas reduction expected from these is not a ton less. Um, but, um, we definitely have health benefits, so no fumes, noise reduction. And we're also leading by example, um, I think it's cool when folks get a chance to see this equipment in action.
The MOA, again, acknowledging the uncertainty, is that net of the seventy five hundred credit?
The.
The mower?
The more, is that net of?
Net of the credit?
I do not know the answer to that. I don't know.
Okay, so there should be a seventy five hundred dollar credit then. Commercial clean vehicle credit, I mean, acknowledging that the federal law is uncertain right now, but, you know, that. Operationalizing the law is uncertain, the law is clear.
And then, as you know, Bartlett Bay, so, um, the ninety percent design drawings. Um, came out this month, and the goal was to use zero use, to not use fossil fuels, but we do have a natural gas backup. Um, so the, it will be, um, the heating will be from water source heat pumps. But then there will be a backup gas boiler, um, there, um, is the potential for. Solar to cover a hundred percent of average current demand, so not peak demand, but average current demand, so that's very exciting. We will have to see, um, as we move along, uh, what the numbers look like for, um. The buildings and, um, everything that needs to be there, and then, um, what we can do about solar, but. Um, we're hoping to use some of the revolving fund monies to, um, help install, um, some solar power there. And then transportation, bike pedestrians, so in fiscal year twenty five, um, a million dollars invested. In bike ped infrastructure, fifty six percent of that comes from external sources, so that is not directly taxpayer money. Um, and I, I wanted to present that that way because I think that's, um. Erica Kwan does a great job of bringing in outside money, um, to help fund these projects, so it's a shout out to her work. And in FY twenty six, uh, hopefully if all goes according to plan, fifty five percent of the costs. Are gonna be coming from external sources, so that's great, um, what we put in, we're getting double back, um, and it's, um. Two million dollars in investment in bike ped infrastructure. And then city center, um, includes a, a lot of the city center. This is, is, as you know, in, in the budget, this is a separate item, but a lot of the projects that is there also have to do with. Um, walking, um, and walk, um, bike and pedestrian infrastructure. Um, hopefully we'll get that bridge, and so that is thirteen million dollars, um. In infrastructure, obviously that includes the Garden Street connection, that is also for vehicles, I get that, but still. Um, there's no way to tease out that piece easily, but, um, again, that's leveraging sixty six percent. Uh, of those costs are gonna be from external sources, so that's leveraging taxpayer money to really bring in a lot of funding for. More walkability and, um, more bikeability in our town.
Bettina, you, you indicated that increased use is gonna be a big part of the bike ped. It, do we have a way we're thinking about, or you're thinking about measuring that?
I will have to get back to you on that, I have several things I'm thinking about, but I don't know yet, um, what will pan out from there. But yes, I'm definitely thinking about that because it is a metric we wanna calculate, and, um, the way. So we are currently updating, uh, the baseline emissions, um, not, not the baseline emissions. We're currently updating the emissions to compare to the twenty nineteen baseline to see how we're doing, and the way. Is very car centric, um, we don't really have any measures there in terms of how do we know whether people are biking more or walking more. And so, um, it'd be great to add to some of those original, um, metrics. If you have ideas, I'm all ears, and I mean that not just for the council, but also the public, so email me.
Isn't there a cool bike promotion event with Adam this summer?
Yes. Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna speak to that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna mess it up.
Ped promotion, bike promotion events.
And then, uh, in the non-CIP, so in the general fund, um, funds for, uh, public transit, funds for GMP. Um, for G, from Green Mountain Transit, six hundred and fifty thousand, thousand in fiscal year twenty five. And seven hundred and eight thousand in fiscal year twenty six. And as you know, there's a brand new active transportation plan, and that was funded by a grant, and also twenty thousand from, uh, the planning and zoning budget. So, um, I just wanted to include those cuz they're also climate related.
Thank you, Bettina, any other questions from council?
Hi, Linda Bailey, wanted to put my two cents worth in on your talking about how to show the public. The cost of the new electric vehicles, I wanna say, first off, I approve of them, my next vehicle will probably be either hybrid or electric. But as a taxpayer, I wanna know how the numbers are arrived at, something like cost of gas vehicles. Would be X, cost of the EVs is this number, anticipated rebates, X and Y amounts. I have a lot less confidence in that federal thirty thousand than you seem to have it. Uh, the latest I've heard, non-verified, is that federal government is cutting all grants to public libraries. They're not gonna fund EVs, um, and then anticipated savings of gasoline cost, anticipated cost. Of electric to charge the electric vehicles, something like that coming to a final number would give me a lot better sense of. How are you saving money for me this way? How are you helping the environment this way? Just as a, another way to do it instead of just giving a, an, an number, thanks.
Thank you, Linda.
There we go, um, Cindy Freeman, I'm just wondering, you, in your presentation, you had mentioned that. The police and the fire department are not having plug-in hybrids. They're having just hybrids, and so then I'm wondering, why do we need EV chargers at those places?
Fire does have fully electric.
Oh, it does, okay, okay, but we're not getting new ones, okay, and then, I, I, these, these are all just questions I'm asking. And then the boilers, are they, are the current ones in disrepair? Do we need new ones?
I'll, I'll add to, um, Steve's comment that the plugins at our employment hubs are also for employees getting to work. So it eases, um, our staff who want to have electric vehicles.
How many have them currently? Hey, cuz I just saw a whole bunch of EV chargers, Tesla EV chargers. Um, in Williston, and I only saw one Tesla being charged. I mean, I'm, I, I just, you know, I guess, you know, you can, I, I just, I guess, um, I, I just would like to know. You know, if, if it's in disrepair and if we need it.
Well, let me stay with the chargers.
How about boilers?
Oh, okay, I'll do boilers, uh, Lou Brzezinski, Energy Project Manager, on the boilers, the people who repair them. They put yellow and red tags on them, if there are yellow tags, you can keep on them, if it's red tags, you gotta shut it off. We're in yellow tag, no, we're, we're barely close to yellow tags, they've been telling us for several years, and they can't get parts for them, so. They're also thirty years old, so we're. We had to replace the boilers anyhow, yeah, that's the answer to your question.
Really good to know as, as the taxpayer, and I think that's good to add to the figures. Is the need of it as well, um, because the taxpayer paying for something that's not necessary at the moment. So, and then.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement that.
If, if the city has made a mistake in the past with regards to that sort of thing, we have gone too long. We are trying to get into a position where we buy the new equipment before we spend a lot of money on maintaining it. Because when a boiler goes down in the middle of the winter time, double time for everything, you know. And you're gonna spend that money with buying the new equipment, let me, let me get back to the chargers very quickly. We have a plan that lays out what kind of EV vehicles we're gonna need for, say, the next ten, fifteen years. We can't ask the fire department or the police department to buy EV vehicles unless we have chargers there. So the, the overall plan says get the chargers in place and then. Bring, bring the vehicles onboard.
Great, from wrong, Lou, the, the charges will also be available to the public?
The plan right now that we, that we're working to says, first priority is the city vehicle. Second priority is employees, third priority is it's open to the public. And the plan is to have a little card system, just like we have out back here to make that work.
Thank you, Sam, any other, Mike, yeah, I could.
Really good questions, I, cuz I think the, the goal here is to, if you ask that question, obviously other people in our community also has it, so I think. In terms of, uh, helping improve on what has been a very good presentation, uh, to basically be sure that people understand that. You know, it's, it's, it's not a zealous intent, it's just a common sense intent. But one thing that you underscored and highlighted, which I, you know, we all think is great, is that external funds. And as, you know, I wasn't here when your position was created, but I remember in watching it, it was about a person would be coming to access these external funds. I'm just wondering, do you have a sort of macro sense of the challenge we have going forward and how much of what we've planned presupposes those macro funds? And at, at what stage would it be prudent to, to recalculate? You know, what is the timeline? I know there's a lot of unknown, but is, is, that I would assume some thinking is going along these lines.
What I would say is that we're already recalculating. Um, and, and prioritizing what we can do, um, locally. And with sure funding, uh, from the region, basically. So we're, we're not planning on accessing any sort of, um, new federal funding streams anytime soon.
And all the ones that you've said fifty five percent, sixty five, those are already federal funds locked in, or are in some cases, there's. You know, they've put things on hold and being reviewed and we're waiting to see what, because in the case of, I, I mentioned at the beginning on Green Mountain Transit, that was eleven million dollars. Those premise on the beginning of a transition to electric, and that, that's has stopped cuz eleven million dollars is gone. But it requires quite a pivot in terms of how to say, how would we stock the vehicles if the, the, the funding line? And the vehicles that we were assuming to use go, go away.
I would say that for those slides in which I put in the external funding, those are all, um, outside. Of my purview, and so I would not have the latest on what the status is of that funding. I don't know if Jesse, you know a little more?
So I think all federal funding is uncertain at the moment, um, we continue to be optimistic and move forward. I think a lot of what Bettina is talking about though, in, in these presentations, yes, leveraging and funding, it's also. Prioritizing the things that the city is going to have to do anyway, if we want to maintain the current level of municipal service. So we're going to have to replace police cars every, on a cycle. So as we do that, to prepare for being able to use the dollars we would already be spending over here for electrification. It's our dollars that we're trying to figure out how to best set ourselves up for to invest those dollars, our dollars over time. And as Bettina says, part, a big part of her last three months has not only been unpacking this, what you saw here. But also building relationships with our statewide networks who have a good sense of what's gonna be available. From a philanthropy's perspective, from a state funding perspective, from a federal funding perspective, from a utility perspective. And setting ourselves up well from a relationship basis to be able to leverage those things against each other over time. So we have no hard and fast information at the moment, but I think we are doing the best we can.
And I, I just wanna give kudos that you're already pivoting, you know, it's, it's best to, hopefully it doesn't happen, but if it does happen, already planned because. Uh, otherwise, the, the shock is much greater, thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Bettina. Maybe we'll take a five-minute break here? Okay, we're gonna get started again with item nine and Bettina Megas, Climate Action Manager, Introduction of an Update to the Heating and Service Water Heating Ordinance.
Okay, so Bettina Megas, Climate Action Manager. Um, this should be a shorter presentation. I want to talk about the Article seven of the ordinances, um, the Heating and Service Water Heating Systems. So the outline of this presentation, a little bit of the background on the ordinance, the original hot water exemption in that ordinance, um, a bit of the research we did and potential courses of action, recommendations, and next steps. So this ordinance was approved on November seventh, twenty twenty-two, and it took effect February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And it requires that all new buildings have a renewable primary heating systems and renewable service water heating systems. And it's as defined, there's more detail in the ordinance, but this should be sufficient for what we're gonna talk about. It does allow for a waiver under limited circumstances in which the applicant can show that there is an exceptional um economic burden to have renewable primary heating system or renewable service water heating system. And at the time, it included a two-year exemption on hot water system in some buildings. So that two-year hot water exemption um was from February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to February fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. So it is currently expired. The exemption applied to hot water heating systems in commercial or industrial buildings, mixed-use buildings, and multi-unit residential buildings. So what we did um was researched why uh that exemption had been put in place at the time, the current state of technology for the hot water heating um and evaluation of um the permits submitted within that period, sorry, I should say exemption period, and the potential courses of action uh based on that research. So the rationale for the exemption was that there was no efficient um way of having uh hot water heat pump technology for large systems, whereas talking about circulation systems that go um around the building and really can really handle the peak demands that you can have. Imagine if you're talking about an apartment building, everybody wants to sneak a shower at six AM or you know, when they get home at five PM, et cetera. So um we talked to um different stakeholders that confirmed that the state of technology has, is about the same in this realm. We also evaluated the permits submitted between February twenty-three and February twenty-five. And within those, there was one mixed-use building, um, nine triplexes or, and or fourplexes, uh, eleven duplexes and forty-eight single-family homes. So there, you know, what we're talking about here is not something that is um the most common building um in South Burlington, or the most common new building in South Burlington.
Tina, just remind, the exemption there was, was just for the mixed-use building or also for the triplexes, fourplex, duplexes? I just don't remember.
So the way um that as far as I know, the exemption did not apply to the triplexes and the fourplexes.
So the, the, so the only exemption was given to the one.
And commercial buildings um really is a broad category. You know, you can think of an office as a commercial building or a fitness center. It's also a commercial building and their need for hot water can be very, very different. So um that is something that we wanted to look at. So we identified um a few potential courses of actions. We can do nothing. If we do nothing, the consequence would be uh probably a burdensome requirement for multi-unit residential um buildings because we know the technology isn't there yet. And that's not really where we wanna be when we're trying to um densify um our housing and, and increase our uh housing stock. We could also extend the exemption as is, but then all commercial buildings, so even commercial buildings that do not use much hot water would be exempt. Um, and so then we'd have a wasted opportunity to reduce um greenhouse gas emissions. Um, and then we could also, what we identified as the recommended action is to remove the exemption, to extend the exemption, but remove the exemption for commercial low-water users. And so commercial buildings that are light hot water users would be required to comply. And that would um be good and also consistent with our goals. So the recommendation is to extend the exemption for maybe two or three years for multi-unit residential buildings, mixed-use buildings and commercial buildings that are heavy water users. The Distribution Office at the Champlain Valley Water District said that the heavy water users can be characterized as those requiring more than one-inch water metering connection. So we do have a way of splitting um the commercial users um in that way. And also, we might need to do a little bit of uh clarification in the scope of the exemption because the exemption language right now uh has definitions, and so those definitions, I think, makes more sense if they're in the definition section, so update to make sure that um everything is um makes sense and is clear.
So I, I'd be interested in knowing a little bit more about um, you know, what we found out about the technology and the reason I ask is, I know there are kind of large municipalities around the country that are going fully electric. I think New York for seven-story buildings or less is all-electric or by two thousand twenty-six all-electric and, and all buildings, I think, by two thousand twenty-nine. So like, how, how are other people doing it?
I do not know how New York City um made that decision, but I can look into that.
I had a question also around uh multi-unit buildings. Single-bedroom apartment buildings versus um larger multi-bedroom apartment units. An apartment unit that is closer to a townhouse in size has an easier opportunity to use a heat pump hot water heater than a one-bedroom efficiency apartment. And I didn't know whether it would be worth trying to differentiate between multi-unit buildings that are, that are large residential units versus small apartment buildings.
I agree, and um I've, I've been looking at how to come up with a good definition. Personally, I consider that the current definition is a little bit unclear um as to what it applies to and what it doesn't, because it is following the uh RBS or the CBS code and those, by the way, had an update since this ordinance passed as well. So it, I think that, that is why I'm talking about that definition, that I think probably conceptually, when we think multi-unit residential building, we're picturing something that perhaps the current definition is not adequately representing. So we're looking at that and I'm getting some additional help from um somebody in efficiency Vermont to try to come up with language that would really get at that issue.
And you're just looking for input from us tonight, is that right? Direction?
Yes, to see if.
We're not making a motion on anything, we're just giving feedback?
So not necessarily making a motion on anything, but if you, basically, we need to go and write ordinance language, so.
So I agree with the recommendation, with the caveat that I just mentioned. I just want to put that out there.
Can, can I, is this a, in terms of the large buildings we're talking, the multi-unit ones of s- side of significant size? Is this a, a requirement that exists in any of the municipalities around us in the sort of greater Burlington area, let's say, or the so-called cities?
This ordinance was modeled um from Burlington's ordinance, so Burlington definitely um has.
And we have Essex Junction or Col- Wilson, I'm just thinking about the areas.
I know that Williston is looking at this ordinance. I don't think they have one yet, but they were looking at this ordinance.
And what is the cost consideration to a building of, a, a unit that wants this ordinance is in place?
Can you read that?
What is the additional cost to?
To comply.
To comply. Yes, thank you.
With the addition of the hot water.
Yeah, yeah.
Heating. It would be building dependent, I don't.
Do we, as, as a percentage, an additional to, you know, currently it's X, the, the cost has increased, you know, point, point, zero, 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 five or point five or five?
I, I do not have that off the top of my head, but at the same time, part of the issue is that that does not an easy number to get at in terms of this, because it would really depend on what your needs are, what your hot water demand is, whether it has those peaks, what is it at peak, would you need extra storage tanks? So if you need extra storage tanks, you may need extra space. If you need extra space, then you're talking about your building. It, it kind of gets complicated, it's not kind of that easy to figure out.
It's not a, at a level that would be a disincentive to say, building here, since we're, you know, we still have to build out the TIF, we still have a lot of larger multi-building, so we need to have to meet our tax objective versus, let's say, building in a place where this would not comply. That's why I think right off the bat, I would say that therefore extending it a little bit longer until we've finished the TIF is I would definitely be leaning in that direction.
I think there is an added cost, whether it's a diff- uh offset cost by added revenue that a builder can get by building here. Also, to Bettina's point, like, it is very different to think about what that added cost is for a hotel with a hundred and twenty-five showers versus a commercial building that's a warehouse that has an employee bathroom. It's very hard to under.
Or a brewery?
Or a brewery, or, you know, there's really vastly different water uses, so.
Based on your exemption, sorry, I, I'm sorry, just, based on your exemption, it would, whatever that cost is, it would not be incurred over the next three years because they're, they're being given this exemption. Right, because it said, right, so this is, if we can't calculate it, we don't know the plus or minus, it's, it's, it's a, it's a not an issue if we adopt this uh recommendation that you have for the next three years. And then hopefully technology advances and perhaps it becomes a completely wash. Not to use the water term, but yes.
Correct.
Okay, definitely, I share Laura's view that I support this.
And just to clarify, this is new buildings.
New buildings. New construction.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not there. I mean, I'd like to understand. I should just clarify, so New York for, in beginning two thousand twenty-four requires all electric, including hot water heaters for seven stories or less, and beginning two thousand twenty for all buildings, seven stories and more. So I, I'd like to understand how they're doing it, how they've been doing it before we agree to basically dig our hole deeper with new buildings using natural gas for hot water, when we know that we can't do that, um, and that that's not compatible with having a um a future for our children. So that, that's what I'd like to understand.
The reason I was agreeing with the exemption is that from what I understand and what I've heard, and I have been a builder and talked to a lot of builders, is that the technology is still either not there or not available in our region currently. And um I would love to see us go all-electric and go all heat pump orientation. But I don't want to do it at the expense of not being able to build multi-unit houses, especially low afford, or affordable housing units, et cetera. And um given the research that Bettina has done, it sounds like maybe New York knows something we don't and we should find it out, which I think is a great idea. Short of that, I don't want to inhibit the ability, the ability to effectively put in buildings.
Yeah, I don't think New York's the only jurisdiction, so I, I think that, well, uh, like, it may well be that that's correct, and it may be in other places in the country that have stuff that we can't get, but um, I, I just haven't heard that yet. I'd just like to understand that better, so.
I think it would be great to, to, to do some research to find out what it is we don't know, if there is something we don't know.
But in the meantime, you're looking for, uh, if I'm not mistaken, a motion to uh, as, to extend the exemption as that's your, no? Recommended action, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at that.
You know, I love motions. So what we were looking for is direction of, do you want us to turn this recommendation into ordinance language that, that would then come to you for first reading and a, then a public hearing and then adoption? So regardless, we are, you know, six weeks, two months from the exemption, it's being re-upped. Right now, there is no exemption, right? So is there direction from the council for us to spend some legal time making this into legal language? And I think we can do that concurrently to additional research.
I would agree that the additional research would be worth doing. And that we should move forward with the exemption.
So then I make a motion that we, with that, plus you, Steve. That's not part of the motion. Uh, I, sorry, Steve. I, I make a motion that we, uh, extend the exemption for, I guess you said a three-year period?
So I think all we need is a motion to make the recommended action into ordinance language as, in parallel to doing additional research.
As she said.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay. I'd like, I'd like to see the research first, so it's three, one, and one absence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to item ten, receive a briefing on field maintenance at Veterans Park and provide feedback on pursuing either grass or synthetic turf. So, Kershna, Project Manager of Transportation and Open Space, Adam Math, Recreation Parks Director.
Good job tonight, guys. Good event.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate your time. Uh, we are here to talk about a potential synthetic turf at Veterans Park. So as you well know, there is um a project ongoing to improve Veterans Park in general, specifically the soccer and baseball fields, the drainage, and also provide a new storage shed for maintenance and also programming. So the issue at hand with the fields themselves are the wet conditions and how every year we have to take some fields offline in order to let them dry out. This obviously takes away playing time um from our, our residents. And in the course of developing the scope of work for this project, it was discussed whether or not we should consider a artificial turf. However, recently there was legislation passed where artificial turf in Vermont is not allowed because of the presence of PFOS chemicals, which is a forever chemical due to the length of the chains of the carbons and the fluorons. So that contaminates our stormwater, um, so it's really bad for our environment and uh, however, I said, what if I can find a, a PFOS-free turf? So in doing some digging, I found one option that then had a third-party topping called crumb rubber, which is like the typical infill for a turf. Um, however, that crumb rubber still contains the PFOS, so dug a little deeper and I was able to find a um company that has entirely PFOS-free turf with a soft wood proprietary material that acts as the infill. Um, it has just as long of a lifespan. It lasts for the entire. It lasts for the entire lifespan of the turf and everything would be PFOS-free. We would be the first PFOS-free artificial turf in the state, there are about six other artificial turfs right now. Um I believe this artificial turf would extend playing time. Um both into early spring and later fall because uh it stays a little bit warmer, allowing that snow melt to kind of disappear faster. And also, we wouldn't have to take this field offline um in order to let it dry out like we do the other fields. Our DPW crews are very supportive of this endeavor in that they spend upwards of a hundred and eighty minutes a week per. Individual soccer field mowing alone, um that doesn't really include painting and um other maintenance needed. So. There, we have three separate CIP projects for Veterans Park, basically the sum of those. Um investments minus the cost of this turf were left with a hundred and fifteen doll- thousand dollar. Um gap that we would need in order to complete this turf. Um inclusive of all the other improvements at Veterans Park as well. Um and we are coming to you today to ask if you think it is worthwhile to continue pursuing this turf. Um there's no real recommendation or action item needed at this time, it's more just. Do you believe this turf is worth pursuing? Um scoping and getting cost materials, so.
Do you want to go through the other documents before we have that discussion?
Yeah, we absolutely can, um I was wondering, there's. The blue square is would be like the approximate proposed location, yes, yep.
Is is that where, it's almost like a.
There's like that gravel pad.
Hockey or tennis, there's something there.
There's something there now, um some combination permutation of that would be like the synthetic field. Or grass field, it'll still likely be in that location regardless, but.
Court, a hockey rink or something?
I'm not familiar with what it was previously.
Okay, but there's like, okay.
There's definitely some form of like pervious surface.
Yeah, previously, it it used to be a tennis court.
Yeah, so we're looking at a a storage this um shed facility type. Building and then also a new field here regardless of if it is grass or artificial turf.
In the um cover sheet for this. The financial impacts show new turf field five hundred to five fifty, new grass field one seventy-five to two twenty-five. Is that the artificial turf versus seeded grass?
Yes, so those are the two cost options um without considering what we already have invested into the CIP. Those are just like the baseline, like if you asked me how much does a turf cost and if you asked me how much does a new field cost?
And um.
Could could we go through the docs and then then?
Yeah, of course, I wasn't sure you'd want to. More of like a word document style.
No, I mean, just wouldn't mind if just wanted to touch on the the numbers and briefly just.
Yeah. So this was my memo to you all, as you know, um the numbers of it all um starts on the bottom of the first page. Basically, the quote was for just about three hundred and thirty-five thousand, that's the total cost of the materials itself. Um I then got a subbase cost from Krebs and Lansing because they just completed the turf at Rice Memorial, so I expect um. A coarser aggregate, a finer aggregate, and the fabric for the same square footage of the field we were quoted. Um and that subbase comes to a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars approximately, including both labor and materials. Um the cost of engineering, uh we have included in our RFP with Krebs and Lansing, um totals forty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh that brings the total cost of the turf alone to approximately five hundred thousand dollars. So that includes just the turf and the engineering costs for the rest of the improvements, but none of the other materials and labor for the park.
So did you, Ari, you including the shed in here as well?
Uh the shed would be part of those other.
Part of the other.
Yes.
And then you have not netted out the annual uh um maintenance expenses.
Of the turf itself?
Of the current um current maintenance expenses of grass.
Right, I have not netted that out of the the grass cost, no.
It would be nice to see those costs added to the grass costs, so that we would know what. Over the lifespan of the turf, what the maintenance cost of grass would be, so we could see. Lifetime cost of the grass field versus lifetime cost of the uh turf field.
But it add calculation if you're trying to get a real sense of the return of money is the usage. As percentage of usage of the uh of the.
Of the two.
Turn of the two, because I think there, if you go per day cost, I think it's gonna be quite telling. Is there any maintenance for the turf field, do you have to add the wood filler over time, does it degrade?
So this wood filler. It's very interesting when you read the uh packet I got from the supplier, it actually absorbs rainwater. And that helps keeps it both dense and cool, so you don't have as much of a, they call it like a splash up of the typical crumb rubber. Um so whereas athletes find that that gets like stuck in their shoes and it comes home with them and their gear bags and stuff. Um this soft wood infill material wouldn't do that as much, um it's about maybe half as less, I would say.
And are the have have this manufacturer installed um fields with that material? Do we know like, is it successful, how many fields are there, like are we a guinea pig or?
I've definitely only spoke to the salesperson that I am in contact with, so obviously they're gonna tell me. It's great everywhere near you, so I haven't found anything like online as far as like looking at a life cycle analysis and things like that. Um of this like proprietary material, but everything I've read from them, I. Would also support, I.
Great to get um maybe um leads from them on several um, you know.
Basically ask for like reviews of other.
How's that feel working out?
And that's definitely something I would do in this next step, I think right now, it's just asking, is this worth our time and effort? Or would you rather we um pursue a grass field and get that ball rolling faster?
Yeah, the I'm the uh two things that jumped out at me and and it's testing my memory, but. I, when the high school installed the turf field, which I understand this is a different. Material now and uh but one, the lifetime was substantially longer, I think this was eight years in here approximately. And I think it was up to twenty years um on whatever got installed there, and then there were some playability issues. Initially um that were somewhat safety related um.
Yeah, so that also um they say the the crumb rubber is what really has the concussion risk with artificial turf. Um because it's so bouncy and it has so much movement to it, whereas this soft wood infill, it retains more density because it absorbs water. So there's less of a bounce, so that it's also safer from a concussion.
I think at the end of the day, getting some references from folks who've installed it, it sounds like it's not a lot yet. Um but whatever experiences other folks have had, it would be helpful to know.
The the other thing, I guess um, I guess I hadn't appreciated that we were. We had all uh kind of decided to create more fields at the park as opposed to maintaining the fields we have um. It was that a decision we all made or is that like something that should be part of the?
There were separate CIP sheets for each like improving the drainage at the soccer fields as well as a new field and a new storage shed. So I believe it was like, yes, and.
With a new field?
Yes, the new field was was in there. And I think that is because so often we've had to take one of the existing fields offline to let it dry out, so I think like. Regardless, we need some form of new field, um even if it's just to just let those grass fields cycle through their wet days.
Well, from my perspective, first of all, congratulations on probably becoming Vermont's expert on this new technology. I hope you don't lose you and you go off and become a a salesperson. Uh but uh you know, with the caveat that, you know, you'll do the due diligence, which as you said, you have every intention of doing. Uh on how this has worked out all over the long term or however long this has been out somewhere. But to me, I think especially in including getting the numbers back, including per day usage, because I think that's where it's gonna be very telling. I think anything that, uh you know, getting an indoor facility, which you know would be the perfect wonderful thing. That everyone would love and allow us to extend the active use of our our a park is, you know. Probably, I I don't want to say not in my lifetime, but maybe not in my active lifetime.
Looked at under the master plan.
Oh, yes, we will, we'll see, but I think this is a a way to extend uh the opportunity for for. Young people, but also adult, uh yeah, I play soccer, I've loved the indoor soccer, Adam, that was so fantastic. And you know, the ability to have an extended period, I live not far from Veterans, you know, my first thought when I moved there is great, I'm gonna. Save my ankles and knees, I'm gonna run it uh and so many days, two, three days after the rain. You just can't run on it because you just eventually are soaked, but so I for one would think that this wa- is worth continuing to explore.
I have a visceral um negative reaction towards turf. Um I try to get over that, but um. I understand its its utility and its function, um I. Would like to believe that there would be a way to work with the field so that it could drain better. So that it could support turf and uh I think it would be. Better environmentally and I'd rather have my kids playing on grass than on plastic personally um. But I understand the functionality of it, and so I just. I would like to make sure that. There isn't a way to get close to the same results with real turf. Um and the added dollars to do the artificial turf. Could they be used to create better drainage for that area so that real turf would sustain and work better? So I understand why we're looking at this, I still have a negative gut reaction to it. And would love to know that it really is the only way to get the serviceability that we want.
Yeah, I kind of share Laurie's sentiment, I'd love to see if there's a way to um. Have a a grass field that works and like in terms of emissions too, I know we're currently using gas equipment. But my hope is we're gonna be moving to electric mowers and electric tractors and, you know, have a green field with. Insects and and bees and pollinators and electric equipment and that just um, that feels better to me, so. That's kind of where I'd love to go.
Yeah, I I mean, my general feeling is it's worth getting information to take it to the next step. And that may include what you've talked about Laurie and Andrew, just is there a solution? That would improve drainage and still use grass that is um viable for that space. Cause I I know, since I've been involved in council, I've mostly heard complaints about it and the quality. Um this is a big investment, um so it it needs vetting for for sure. Um but I think a kind of the make versus buy alternative would be a good assessment to do.
And it would be really helpful to me to know what the maintenance costs are for the real grass field. And what the uh. What the impact, what the, how much mowing and how much fuel is involved in mowing and. What the impacts are between that and servicing a field that doesn't need that. I don't know if that's too vague.
I think a little bit of that was provided in the amendment, um the Dan Gregory provided a written statement on how much. Time, emissions, and um also the time and paint spent to re-stripe the fields every week. Um I think that document speaks to that a little bit.
But I think we need to take that memo and the capital costs of both options and lay it out over useful life of.
Right.
Make it simple for us, easy-minded people.
So if you have enough guidance from us then?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Ryan Doyle, uh yeah, a couple of questions, what is the proprietary wood blend? Um I would be curious if there's any more information they can share about that, because I know when I'm like doing like. You know, like risk analysis calculations in college, we're looking at, you know, BPA versus a BPA free. But the BPA is replaced with a chemical that has no knowledge of its effects, and so. Um obviously, in the way that we treat wood, uh you're like, for example, like pressure created wood, there's a couple of different ways that can be done. Um but we still have to dispose of that wood differently, uh like you're not supposed to burn it, for example. Um so I would be really curious about um if they can provide any assurance about their their proprietary process on that wood. To make sure we're not just replacing one thing with something else that's not good. Um in terms of, you know, the concerns with the council and like a natural field versus a not natural field. Like a sports field is barely natural, I mean, it's like, uh, it's not exactly um. For how often it's mowed, it's really not providing a lot of habitat, it gets run on a lot, and so if. The other thing is if we improve the drainage on it, we may also be looking at providing irrigation, uh building it and and. Those are other things to consider, whether, I'm not saying that that would um make it suddenly not balance out as well, but. Uh I think it's cool that we're at the point in for the size of the city and the size of this park to be really eyeing these things. Um and making a very, hopefully, a very well-informed decision about how we invest in fields going into the future.
Thanks, Ryan, I did consider some of that life cycle analysis of the difference between um a grass turf. A traditional synthetic turf and this PFOS-free synthetic turf, um I can't really speak to the resins of the actual like. Synthetic grass fibers themselves, but I can speak to the infill itself is from softwood trees. And it's really like shaved down and shake down till it gets to this um ideal shape, they say, and then that's used. For the life of the turf field and eventually just like disintegrates back into being a bio de- biodegradable substance. Not, not that I'm aware of from the materials I've been given at this point, um I can't speak to the resin of like the. Synthetic blades of grass itself yet, I don't have that much material on it at this time, but um. I was happy to see that there wasn't any additional chemicals used in the infill, at least since that is where the bulk of the PFOS comes from with the synthetic turf. Yeah, of course.
Yeah, it's still considered, right, you 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 mentioned that it disintegrates over time, that's why I was asking, is there is there maintenance, do you need to add?
Right, like a topping up.
Or over time for for this solution, that 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 was my question.
They say it lasts for the the entire life cycle of the turf, which like that's another question I have for the distributor as well, it's something I would like to like. Get into a little deeper.
Thank you for doing all this work on it.
Yeah, great presentation.
Being our resident expert.
Lot of detail, thank you so much. Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, moving on to item eleven, receive the final equity and outreach toolkit and discuss the council's role. In implementation, Paul Connet, Director of Planning and Owning.
Hey, folks. Lots of dispersed topics tonight.
Oh, Silken, Silken, can you stop sharing?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Sorry, actually, I think I can do it, I think I can do it. I could, I could do it, I kicked you out.
All right, folks, um so tonight, uh I'm just giving a super brief overview of. Uh the equity and outreach toolkit, you received a more thorough presentation a few months ago from Gelson. From Kelsey, um so and so I'm just gonna speak briefly to the toolkit itself, which you received in your packet. And then really, this is um more of a next steps and your role in this work. Um in your packet, there were two documents, um we decided to split it up um into a summary, which is really the background. How it's supposed to be used um and uh and how can evolve over time, and then the toolkit itself. And then the toolkit itself, um, which, um, has considerations, it sort of wo- walks, uh, particularly staff through the, um, uh, developing a project and, um, how should we consider outreach from the very beginning? It also has, um, pretty detailed, um, personas, which, which are the, um, personality, the, the, discussion of some of the, uh, types of people in our community, um, who can be, or categories of people in our community to give us some food for thought. Um, I really wanna jump right to implementation, but I'm happy to take questions about the toolkit itself. Um, in there at the back of the, um, guide was a series of short, medium and long-term um, projects for us to be working on. Um, this slide is not in the toolkit itself, this is something that we, um, staff put together afterwards, thinking about this shared responsibility of how we, um, how will we take what we have, which is just a toolkit and then operationalize it for the community. And so we look at, um, staff training, piloting projects, um, monitoring outcomes, but then also, um, bringing it fully into planning processes, which we're gonna speak about in a few minutes. Um, uh, institutionalizing the toolkit, what does that mean for us? And so that's i- in our view, I think that's a, that's a shared role between staff and, um, counselors. Um, to date, um, we have already been using it, we were using it, it was in draft form, um, to, uh, we've provided it, uh, to our consultants and to our lead staff folks in projects that kicked off this year, including the Economic Development Strategic Plan, the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. Um, we have, uh, initiated orientation to, to lead staff. Um, and we have already been challenging ourselves on what is the structure of input? And I would say that, um, uh, Adam and Silken have really already been showcasing how we can bring new people, um, with different perspectives into conversations. We did the same thing, um, most recently with the, uh, Regional Planning Commission has, um, is doing outreach on their future land use map and instead of hosting meetings, uh, that were traditional meetings here or piggybacking on a planning commission meeting and something like that, um, we had, uh, they were looking for opportunities to reach other members of the public, so we coordinated with both the library and the rec department for events that they were doing, which, um, brought in people from a whole wide cross-section of the community who are not typically, um, oriented to come to public meetings to talk about policy or have not spent a lot of their time doing that. Um, shifting gears over to, um, you know, where do we go from here? So we have a toolkit, the toolkit is really just a, it's, it's a map for us as we think about individual projects, but really it's an opportunity for all of us to consider, um, how we can bring more perspectives into both the beginning of projects, but also to consider those perspectives, uh, as we move towards decisions being made, whether they're middle decisions or big decisions. Um, and so here are some ideas that we wanted to share from our perspective in terms of, um, getting your specific help of what are missing voices and points of view that you're seeing. Um, uh, how can, how can we help you? And I know you've already started this conversation with Anna, our, uh, data manager, but how can we help you to have data-driven decision-making? Um, a suggestion that we have that would be a shared work for, for both of us is to communicate how engagement has affected your decisions and your discussions. So one of the really key tenants of the work that our consultants were, worked on in our advisory group um, of local community members was keep people engaged by knowing how their feedback has been incorporated through the process, so people know that they're not just yelling into a empty box. And I know that we, we all, we all, um, conceptually think of this and how do we operationalize this in a more consistent manner so that people can really, um, sort of know how decisions are being arrived at and what role they played in that. Um, and then, uh, you've al- already been doing this fourth one, um, with the community, with the conversations with the counselor, um, but continuing to consider, um, you know, meeting community members where they're at, that might mean literally, um, but it also might mean figuratively in terms of, you know, if they're only prepared to give forty-five seconds of their feedback or it's a, uh, it's at an event where they are happy to spend five minutes, but that's really not the reason that they came out to something because they live busy lives, being aware of that. And then considering what are the perspectives from our community, um, knowing how our community is evolving and changing. We're now, you know, for example, half of our community now lives in multi-unit housing. Um, how's that reflected, um, in all the other perspectives in, um, committee appointments? Um, and then, you know, the, the sort of really the core of this whole thing, um, I take every opportunity I can to make note of the city plan. You all, uh, put four key principles, um, and of course your guiding principle around, um, climate action. Uh, these are the principles that every policy decision, um, and, and all the work are being held together. And then really the, you know, the, the equity, uh, in outreach toolkit comes down to this last piece. Um, there's lots and lots that goes up to the finish line of a project. And throughout that process and at the finish line of whatever policy we're, we're putting together, what was the input, who wasn't at the table, who might be disproportionately impacted? And that's really, um, that entire report in three lines. So really this is, um, an opportunity for you all to have, um, what, what does this spark for you all? This is not the end of the conversation, but really, um, a chance for you all to chat and happy to be a part of that.
I'll just say I'm really excited about toolkit and already getting it implemented in the CRO project for the Parks and Open Space Plan. Um, I think being able to use it in looking at conversation with the counselor and just how we do a better job of getting input from all the constituents in our community as we're trying to make decisions and how they impact everybody is, is fabulous and I'm uh, just really grateful for the work you guys have done on it.
So I guess Bettina was here talking about how, um, community members are impacted by our ordinance that requires electrical lines to be buried. Could we use this toolkit to get more, um, data from the community about that issue? How many people are affected, how much, you know, would this toolkit be something that could be used for that purpose?
I mean, I think that's a good case study example, I think it can be used in, in any example. I think that's an interesting one to see, what are the neighborhoods that have this interesting combination of above, uh, above-ground power lines, but then underground individual serving? Um, I think that's, that's a filter that can be applied to this, it can also be, you know, we, we did the same thing, for example, in a, in a very different way with the Economic Development Strategic Plan of making sure that as we're talking with businesses, we have many known businesses that come to us, um, and major players in our community play a really important role, like Beta and OnLogic and many others. And then there's a whole trove of very small businesses that are, um, playing a really important role too. And while this is not about, in that case about residents, it is about, um, viewpoints, about how city policy, city regulations affects different abilities to have employment, so yes, absolutely.
Could, could you actually give, it would be very interesting to give in your mind, example from start to finish, how all this loop would work? And any theoretical, because it's, it, I mean, I mean, just questions that jump up of how long does the process take? I'm, I'm all for it, I'm all great, I'm just trying to understand how that it would always be applied in the same way to, 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 to every process, uh, how you define which are the groups that are not targeted? Uh, and who represents this group? And how do you then loop back the information to that group in what sort of way that, you know, there, there is impact?
Sure, so I, I don't think, it, it is absolutely not a one-size-fits-all toolkit. Um, uh, Steve, I'm gonna move into your area very quickly. I took very small amount of training in Internet Command System, which is, you know, it, it's the same structure that goes from very small to very big, and so it's the same thing here. If we're talking about a sidewalk project being considered on a street, the, um, the geography of who's, of who's impacted by that and, and what this means might be very small. If we're talking about a Parks and Open Space Master Plan, it might be much larger. But the core questions at the beginning can still be the same ones, which is, um, are there, um, who, who's likely to be affected? Um, what are we, what modes of communication are most effective in reaching the group? Um, and, and the folks who are, uh, who are being identified? And I think, a- and then, um, one of the key things that the consultants had shared with us was that it's not necessarily a total numbers that we're after. Um, you know, a hundred and fifty people participated in, 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 in outreach. That's good, but the question that they challenged us with is does that represent a broad, a cross-section of perspectives? Because numbers and perspectives may or may not be the same thing. Somebody may bring one person sharing a specific piece of feedback may very well inform a policy. Um, the really hard work in this, to, to come back to your question, I think is in the building the networks in our community. So we certainly in the planning department have certain networks in our community. We know as we were doing the city plan a couple of years ago, that there are networks in our community that other departments have that are unrelated to ours. We have a very broad cross-section of, um, people in our community, some who are very well-connected and some who are not well-connected and some who are very well-connected in small groups, but not to us. And there is no magic, you know, next week we, we will have connections to that. And I think that's the sort of long-term behind this of building stronger networks in the community so that we can empower leaders within those groups to be able to be informed and informed, uh, their constituents to bring more voices directly to you.
And to, to, to your point, the notion of equity, equity implies that there's a sense throughout the city that everyone feels that they're, they're being equally taken care of or, or share the same opportunities or have the same, uh, 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 care for, or, or access to services. So, you know, you sort of said, if we're building a, a sidewalk here, you know, it's a smaller group. You could, you could make the argument, it's actually a bigger group because why are we built, we're only building three sidewalks and why are we building one, two, three here? So I'd assume that this process starts from even the broader conceptual, you know, where is the open space, where is the red park, why is this a pop-up park? Why, why the sequencing, cause it, it's sequencing is always the, the notion of why prioritization here versus there?
Absolutely, and, and in my example of the sidewalk, I was sort of, I had jumped to the design phase of a project like that of which side of the street should it be on, but you're right, absolutely, just as with the active transportation plan, what are the potential projects? What is the balance of investment in pedestrians versus vehicles versus buses that we wanna be doing? It goes all the way from the top to the bottom, so this is, um, you know, I think that the toolkit gives us a lot of, um, ways to consider a project from the beginning and the hard work is on all of us to say, what does that mean for us? And how does that evolve over the next decade? In terms of the, you asked about closing the loop, I think that there's a lot of opportunities that we have already initiated, like the city news, um, and our brand-new website. Um, to me, the, 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 um, I don't wanna say the catch with it, but, but the hard work with, with any of this is figuring out how do we be, um, very strategic in where and how we invest our collective time? Because this isn't necessarily a, every project should have a hundred thousand dollars dedicated to outreach. This is really about being strategic in how we use the limited resources that we have and drive towards, um, uh, thoughtful and efficient decision-making. So this is neither intended to say we should quadruple the budget of every single outreach, nor is it to say every project should take twice as long as it used to take. I think it's really about being strategic all the way through to be, um, expedient in getting to decisions and cost-effective, but in ways that we're thinking about who's affected by it.
And the last question, and thank you for being so thoughtful. Therefore, in our future briefings from you, just like I really appreciated the last briefing where you said, you know, this is the staff's recommendation or the city's recommendation. When you would brief us, this is how we've applied the toolkit to this particular case. You know, this is the different communities we've identified who have, so that would be a way of us to also have a, a sense of confidence and, and better understanding of, 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 uh, uh, communities or elements or groups of people uh, that we perhaps are, are not sensitive to and as, as you said, it becomes an educational process over time.
Yep, absolutely.
But, and to add to that, I think that is work, this is why this is shared work. I think this is work that we all proactively present to you, answering some of these key, key questions. There is also policy work that you all will do that is, um, kind of outside of, uh, Parks and Open Space Master Plan, a big multi-month process. And we encourage you to ask those questions of yourselves as well in that, in that policy discussion.
Great, fully agree, thank you.
You know, just one comment, I think it, it is, will be difficult not to use the metrics of numbers initially at least to sort of track the efficacy of the toolkit itself. And, uh, you know, I wouldn't discourage anybody from doing that cause I think ultimately that's the first barometer to engaging. It will be, are we getting one or two showing up? Uh, so, you know, I, I know I brought this up before, you know, the notion of like on surveys that, that allow multiple responses and it, you know, what, what were the unique responses? And I do think a metric of unique responses in however the toolkit's utilized, um, is gonna be a good first step to sort of documenting that efficacy.
Agreed.
I also hope that as the toolkit gets used, it will build momentum. As we get better at using the toolkit and reaching the people that we're not reaching now and they get feedback that their input is making a difference, it will increase engagement. And over time, we may improve the toolkit, but it may also become more part of the just everyday functioning because it, it's done the work it needed to do. Um, so it's, it's great having it to really augment, kickstart, kickstart and augment the work we're trying to do to make sure that we're getting feedback from everybody.
Thank you, Paul.
Absolutely.
Uh, next item, receive an update on the rental registry program and provide direction to staff, Stephen Locke, right, chief? Technology working. Good evening, um, we wanted to provide you a brief update on the status of the rental registry program. Um, and so for a little bit of reflection, um, last February, February twenty-four, the council put this, uh, ordinance into place that required all rental, uh, housing to be registered. Um, shortly thereafter, about within a week or so, we submitted a very, um, rudimentary, uh, online way that you could, using a Microsoft Form, uh, register your property uh, to get the system going, and then Patty joined us in May or so and took over the program. And then we hired our first, um, inspector, Rental Registry Housing Inspector, started in September. So that's kind of been the, how we've gotten where we are. Uh, the first year registrations, there was a total of four hundred and seventeen properties that registered. Of that included two thousand six hundred and forty-three units. Seven hundred and sixty-two of those are permanently affordable and one thousand eight hundred and eight of what we would consider long-term. In one thousand eight hundred and eight of what we would consider long-term rental units, your traditional long-term uh market rate. Um, units. There was a lot of conversation about short-term rentals. So existing short-term rentals are what we call people basically Airbnb's. Um, and there were forty-six of those who have registered and twenty-seven who have registered uh short-term rentals, but you're either. They're renting out a room or an accessory dwelling. And so that's the difference between what we would call a short-term rental. And an existing short-term rental. So the forty-six pay the fifteen hundred dollar fee, the owner occupied pay a hundred and fifty dollar fee.
Okay, just on the numbers, the twenty-six hundred rental units are are some of those not required to be registered or are? Most people ignoring our ordinance?
So there, I'm sorry, there's twenty, so there's twenty-six hundred units in four hundred properties. So this building across the street is one property with fifty units in it.
I get, okay, thank you.
So a total of twenty-six hundred units of housing.
One question on on the numbers, the four hundred, the four hundred and seventeen that have registered. Do you know how many rental units there are in the city? So what percentage of our rental units? Have stepped forward to get registered?
So when we started this process, we estimated using census data that there were about three thousand units. Um, and so we're we're, I would say we're getting close. We certainly have picked up a lot of. The all the big ones are easy, right? Those are the ones that are easy. And what we're seeing come in often now are new. One-offs where someone's renting a home, you know, Patty's used um in your water bill, you received to, hey, you have to register. If you have a rental, that's been a a way that of of outreach. Uh, reaching out to some of the property units that have condos in them, but some people, they're allowed to rent out a portion. Those property managers have forced their tenants or those owners to register. So it's a lot of unique ways that Patty has done to to build up those numbers. But I suspect we will see that number. So that twenty-six forty-three registered does not include most of Market Street. It does include. Allen Square and a one or two of the other properties, but it does not include. There'll be another seven or eight hundred units of housing coming on uh this street that has not registered yet. Cause they're not required to register for the first three years on new construction, cause they've just paid a big fee to to be ensure they're safe.
Um, so on the four hundred and seventeen units, as opposed to the uh registered properties, I'm sorry, the properties as opposed to the units. Do you think there are four hundred and fifty properties? I I'm just wondering in terms of the number of properties, if you had a clue.
Yeah, easily. Um, what we've what we've seen just this year with the new software is an influx of. Um, individual con condos like Steve mentioned, um, and single-family properties where the owner is not local. That have got the water bill.
Most.
Um, and those are not dead.
And most of, so these, this four seventeen was as of January thirty-first. When we transitioned to, so this is people using, I'm gonna say our antiquated system. Um, and 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 what Patty is under has seen is more new unique properties coming on. That um using the new online system through our new online permitting system. So that I don't, I don't know where that goes. My guess is it'll be north of five, um, but I don't, I don't know the number.
And the reason new people are coming on is is just easier to do.
Two things, right? Knowledge of it, it's getting word of mouth that you have to register. Using some of the outreach methods that Patty has used and then two, um, using an online system that's pretty, I think, pretty simple to register through.
And once, once you get up to speed with this, do you have a way to um? Reach the non-compliers?
Um, there are a lot of different tools that I can and have used. The largest tool is neighbors.
Okay.
Um, or people complaining, tenants saying something the property owner hasn't been responsive. Um, and ironically, they're not on record with us, so. Start there.
Okay, thank you.
So there are um nineteen short-term rental units that are facing the four-year sunset? Am I reading this right?
Forty-six.
No, but twenty-seven are own-occupied.
No, s- so that twenty-seven is in addition to the forty-six.
It, yeah, it fluctuates.
Because you're allowed, I'm sorry.
So so there are a total of whatever, seventy-something short-term.
Right.
Of those, twenty-seven are, and there are forty-six that are facing the sunset.
Yes.
And are those forty-six units? How many separate properties?
I I would have to run some numbers. There are a few that are that are as a duplex and they rent at both sides. But most of them are.
Most are single.
Single properties.
Single-family homes or single condo unit, somehow a single-family home. Um, there are a couple of properties that like.
Were duplex.
Or three units on a single property that are short-term rentals and are facing that sunset.
Was was that about the number we thought when we did the sunset? I just remember.
We, so we anticipated based upon the data that there are about sixty-five units. What we didn't know is how many of those were owner occupied as an accessory dwelling. And now this is what the numbers are. So th- then we move into the inspections and, you know, we thought, uh, and again, an estimation, I've really thought it would take five years to get through. The inspections of all of these registered properties. And so in our first, you know, really in our first seven months, because Pete really didn't start inspections till September. Um, we've inspected two hundred and twenty-two properties or including seven hundred and fifty-three units. Um, with a total of nine hundred and seventy-five inspections. Now understand. Why that's that's several of those, you have to go back to follow-ups. And that's why that the number of inspections is greater than the number of units inspected. So that's usually because of follow-ups. Um, you know, our priority initially was to make sure all the shirt current, all the short-term rentals were inspected. Um, and then we've just, we have a part-time inspector working as well and they've been, uh, they've been hitting the large units recently, so. Most common violations, you know, this is the, this is really the the list that we find most often. Uh, no GFCIs under your kitchen sink is super common or not around uh in close proximity to to a to a water source. Um, having not having the the furnace or heating source inspected. Not having fire extinguishers of the matter compliance, covering, you know, alarms, carbon dioxide and smoke alarms not meeting the code. Not having handrails, graspable handrails, and then uh non-inhabitable spaces being used um as living spaces. Those are the, you know, I'd say those are the ones most common that that are seen. Um, you know, what will is shown on another slide will be coming up. We're also finding that in the same kind of mixes zoning violations. Um, that are common with um some of these properties. So what the think the challenge, the the teams, the challenge, the the challenges the team has placed forward is, um, you know. Uh, they'll plan, they plan their calendar a month in advance, scheduling out for inspections and then last minute cancellations. Um, and that unfortunately is happening, happening uh very frequently. Um, the, again, we see contractors, tough find contractors to do the work, so violations noted. Um, and then we typically may give thirty days to rectify the given violation and then the owners just cannot find someone to do that work within the given time. Uh, ensuring accurate, up-to-date owner and property and property manager information. And then, um. Uh, you know, I didn't put this one in the memo, but just because it percolates often to the surface is. If someone has changed the use of a of a property, added a bedroom, added accessory dwelling unit and it's not. And it's not zoned and there's no zone, been no zoning, but uh no zoning permit pulled for that. And so that's a lot of the work that, and that's. Not in our shop, right? So one of the challenges that we will have to work through in the future is. Who owns that problem right? Right now, we're passing it on to planning and zoning. Um, I'm not sure that we all agree that that's the best way forward. Um, but when those, those are things that are that are happening. Uh, but I, but but con- concur, so we would say there's been a lot of lives. A lot of success stories as well uh for life safety violations, um, and education to the people. Uh, ensuring that our uh heating appliances are safe, uh, smoke alarms are present. Um, you know, and I think Pete was recently has had two abandoned oil takes, you know, taken out of basement. So. Think there, the team is feeling like they're really making a difference. One of the, you know, there are some challenges that that, you know, I would say Patty has really um found during this, during this time and. In our focus, if you, I know council's focus, I should say, was often when we started this process was about the short-term rental units. And the loss of housing. Um, you know, there there was that that sunset provision in there. Um, you know, from our standpoint, the um, there's not a safety co- problem with our short-term rentals. Most of those, uh, the the vast majority of those, if they're not um up-kept and safe, they're not rented. So the market almost takes care of that. Um, and and I understand that this was more of a housing concern. Um, but it will be a little bit difficult.
I don't think that's accurate.
I I I understood this very much, the regulation of short-term was about not how, well, not wanting to lose permanent housing.
No, but I mean, but it was for me at least was that um someone was running a business in. An area that wasn't zoned for, you know, hotels. And it was also complaints from neighbors, at least, I mean, people may have different. Perspectives on what that was about, but that that's what it was for me.
Again, I I think, also, my apologies if I'm mistaken, I don't think I am, but it, but be that as it may, uh. Uh, definitely what that that too was a concern from a few neighbors. Um, we don't, we we don't see issues with our short-term rentals. Um, and it will be a problem, management problem in twenty-twenty-seven or when it, whenever that kicks in, so. We're okay if you, we want to reevaluate that, how, where, whatever that looks like for short-term rentals. Um, you know, there are differing requirements and so I think in where we're, what this is leading up to is we will, we will. Most likely bring you back in the fall and update on this ordinance to bring some um, re, you know, uh, bring the the. The alignment back for long-term rentals and short-term rentals, because we uh I have some things that are just not the same. Uh, we, we may wanna consider a fee for reinspection um for can the cancellations. And currently there is no fee for late payment. We take registrations all year long, so if you don't register your dog and cat. By April first, over the year, it costs you a little bit more. And we know the first couple of years, I would not advocate for this, but at some point. You know, we, and it will be, renewals are gonna be much easier next year because the system will be automated. You know, this year people had to do renewals, they had to do a new, basically using a new system, a new application. Next year, they'll automatically get a renewal notice in Ja- January.
Start in January.
Start in January, they'll start auto-renewing. Um, but we may want to uh consider that uh something in the future as well. And I think one of the, uh, one of the ask again, as we uh look for, um, you know, we're, this is uh Patty's. Uh, new office space, so we have, uh, and today, today they put, they finished putting the trim around the skirting, so it does look a little bit better. Uh, but you know, this winter, for a few days, we moved them inside or told them to work from home, cause it was pretty cold in there. Uh, and I, you know, ultimately, uh, this is not a long-term fix. Um, and we believe we can um add about two thousand square feet to the north side of the building that would include. Uh, accommodations for the entire prevention division, which, you know, includes now the fire marshal, assistant fire marshal, we have electrical inspector. Uh, and so that is very much a growing team, uh, doing a, and and probably has more public in and out, less now with online permitting. But there still is a lot of public interaction, um, getting that 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 group of folks into one uh one space. And you know, I think our objective would be to that we could be under construction next summer to do that. We think we can pay for this through, um, I think a two, really a two, a couple of things. Uh, one is our current fees exceed, um, do it, our income exceeds our revenue, um, so that that. Which in was done intentionally that to we knew to help pay for this a capital improvement. But I would, we're gonna also, if, and we recommend to you considering a five percent fee, capital assessment fee. On all permits that are issued by the fire department and the elec- so that'd be uh construction permits, electrical permits. And I would say even on our rental registry fee, and that would generate enough revenue over the ten years to pay for about a two million dollar. Lease payment borrower against the general fund dollars will will bring you those options. But that five percent, the maximum new, even on a maximum permit fee right now is three hundred thousand. So a couple of our large projects lately, that's their maximum fee. They, the airport project is a good one to say, just hit the three hundred thousand dollar cap. Their fee would be the most be fifteen thousand, where on a most, you know, most of our permits come in for a few hundred dollars. Uh, in that, you know, but that five percent fee would generate us close to seventy thousand dollars a year. And we would just, uh, we would propose to you have that sunset once this op, once this is paid for. But then this is really being paid for by the users um of the of the system. And I think we can, um, you know, so if if there's. Uh, if there's somewhat of an appetite for us to pursue that, we will bring you back a full plan of that with. Construction cost and formal construction cost design, but we need to move quickly, ultimately, we need to move quickly on this. In order to hit what our consultants believe is the best time to go out to bid for a project, which would be in January of twenty-six. January, yeah, we're in twenty twenty-five, uh, January twenty-six. So, you know, our our goal objective, if if you don't object, object to this. And concept is to bring you back a detailed plan that would move into and show you. Um, and Martha, Martha and I have met on this and Martha, you know, Martha's bought into it. Um, on a way that we would uh that basically pay for this addition of the station through this capital assessment fee and excess revenues. On the um, on our rental, all of our um wrench registries. So I think with that, questions.
So that that sounds reasonable to me. Other folks have views on the five percent?
Oh, I think we ought to be looking for federal grants right now.
Anyone have a views on the five percent?
It's worth exploring and showing us the package and continuing to update the the numbers as as people. Great job finding, um, uh, yeah, I had an experience where one uh resident mentioned to me that they had. Had a couple of safety issues at their apartment building and within forty-eight hours. Uh, your teammate responded and their issues are being addressed. So I think that's a win from my perspective. It's a win-win. It's a win for. Safety and security of our tenants. It's also only benefits the owner of the property to have a good uh product that they continue to send, so. Uh, but it would be good, you know, I don't, you know, let's see the whole full picture, but in in principle, it's definitely worth exploring from my perspective.
So you're okay with potentially increasing the fees?
I would, I would want to look at the whole, you know, what what are the costs, what are the trade-offs? And you know, what are the impact on construction? I think that'd be important thing to say, does that create a greater challenge or it's really marginal? All those things would be.
I'm definitely in supportive and one question I have is the expansion that you're looking for. I know there has been discussion about um increasing inspections in the city to. Eventually cover residential construction, et cetera. Does the expansion you're talking about here? Um, anticipate and provide for that eventuality, or would we need? Additional space as that comes online?
It does contemplate, so on, on on your agenda for the next council meeting is to brief you on. Uh, our proposal updates to the electrical and um fire prevention ordinance, which would require and. Which would, we're bringing to you for your consideration, single-family homes would now be fall under those uh requirements. And this space does contemplate having the space for, which I believe would probably likely at some point require another. Uh, uh, staff person.
So. Bringing inspections effectively online, I think is incredibly valuable for our city and. Having this funding mechanism you've put forward to have the users be the ones who support. The project makes a lot of sense to me, so I'm in favor of moving forward.
And if we were to, um, you know, build out the team, would we be able to then inspect for the primary renewable heating ordinance?
Yeah, I'm, I su- I suspect at some level that would, that would not be a big burden.
So one question, I just, I just wanna go back to the sunset. Do we know of the um forty-six? Units, how many of those are owned by out-of-state folks and how many of those they are owned by local community members? Do we have any insight into that?
I don't have exact numbers on that, cause I didn't anticipate that as a question, but anecdotally, most of the people that I've talked to. I don't have exact numbers on that, because I didn't anticipate that as a question, but anecdotally, most of the people that I've talked to, they're out of state. Started here and they are holding on to it because, and they're on the waterfront typically. Um, and they come back and they vacation in the summer, or it's a family home. I've had two or three different folks. Um, and I, I could certainly start looking for those.
That would be interesting data. The one, look, from my perspective, I would not wanna reopen that conversation. I, I may have been the only one on the council during this, like
You were.
You know. Conversation about this, it was one of the most contentious, emotional, heated, you know, conversations we've had with, you know, just maybe dozens of community members coming, um, to testify. And that four years was kind of like a compromise over many voices and it, it was not just about housing. It was a lot going on in that conversation and I personally would not wanna reopen that.
Next year, the, the date will be really easy to pull on, you know, where people live. Uh, but, and right now it'd be, just be a little bit more complicated, but it could be done.
Um, is there a preferred fee or subsidized fee for permanently affordable units?
So, yeah, so if you're a long-term, normal unit's a hundred and fifty dollars, permanently affordable is twenty-five.
Okay.
That's significant, yeah.
I think, I think that's important to keep in mind, and we just had the conversation about the toolkit and sort of what groups might be, you know, differentially disadvantaged and we're talking about renters here for the most part. Uh, on most of the units that are here now, um, so those annual fees and, you know, potentially improvements may get passed on too. And already, you know, we talk about affordable rents, there's, you know, affordables significantly in quotes. Um, so.
Yeah, and C- CHT has a large number of those.
CHT Cathedral are the two property owners that have a good majority of those are permanently affordable. Um, and yes, there's no question that the fees get passed on to the tenants at all levels. I've had property owners, again, I didn't put a little hash mark every time it was said, but it's been said numerous times.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item thirteen, receive the fiscal year twenty-five policy, priorities and strategy, report number two. And discuss options for the future, Jesse Baker, City Manager.
Um, so typically we put this report on the consent agenda. Um, I'm not going to read through all of the updates, but there are, um, so I think some really exciting updates in that report and proud of staff for making progress on almost all fronts. Um, I wanted to put it on this agenda and, and maybe this will bleed over to the retreat conversation as well. Um, because we are at that time of year when we start thinking about next year's policies and strategies process. Um, I also wanted to share some of the thoughts, it's in your memo. So in your packet is the cover sheet, a memo from, uh, Anna Dubrasky and myself and the full report. Um, share some thoughts that we are having about how to improve this reporting process in the future. And how to better, um, organize our policies and strategies effort to, um, be more impactful, be more accessible, not only to you, but to the community in the future. So things Anna and I are thinking about are aligning, um, the pro- the organizational structure more towards um, type of work, so ordinances, capital projects, planning efforts instead of to topic areas. Um, or ca- or organizing how we present the updates around, in those ways. Um, organizing both either this, the, the structure of the process or the reporting to the city plan, goals and actions. Uh, we've done that a little so far, but it's quite a crosswalk. Um, thinking about how we quantify process updates for you. So instead of just saying, you know, we're working on right of way and we've secured five, five properties. Well, out of how many, where is that in the step, where is that in the process, et cetera? Um, and then, uh, significantly improving the visuals and how we present that information. And Anna included in here a couple of examples of those. So we just wanted to kind of seed some of these ideas as both we go into Thursday's retreat. But also as we think about crafting the FY twenty-six process. Um, and happy to take feedback on that tonight, wait till Thursday, wait until we actually, um, adopt an FY twenty-six process. But want to seed a few ideas with you. That's really it.
Looks like progress. Okay. Thank you, Jesse. Item fourteen, review the significant agenda topics below for the council's April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five council meeting, Jesse Baker, City Manager.
Uh, so, oh, sorry, April, your next meeting is during school vacation week, so it is going to be a little light for staff. Um, but what we have, uh, cor- kind of more meteor items are the Common Roots, um, Award of Funding. Uh, we have a loan application for Airport Parkway. Um, and then as the, as Steve just mentioned, the biggest conversation is gonna be this fire and life safety ordinance update. Um, we were also a bit holding time to see what would come out of the conversation about, uh, the heating ordinance. Um, and any, uh, growth management plan or retreat follow-up we wanted to have at that meeting. So a bit of a lighter presentation, but also, um, uh, lighter staffing that week.
And I'm also out of town, just a reminder for that meeting.
I, I'm, I may as well be. I'll, actually, I will be out of town and I'm, I, I do not think based on what my current schedule is that I will be at a place where I can get on.
All the more reason for light agendas.
Okay, item fifteen, can I have a motion to convene as the liquor control commission?
I move that we convene as the liquor, as an association, liquor.
Commission.
Commission, sorry.
Second?
I have a motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, one absence. So we sh- we are considering the following applications for rules, incitate. I could just say as presented? We are considering. Do I have a motion to approve the applications as presented on our agenda?
So moved, so moved.
Any second. I have a motion to second. All approve, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous with one exception. Can I have a motion to come out of the co- control commission?
So moved.
I have a motion to second, all in favor, say aye. That's unanimous with one absence. Item sixteen, other business, any other business?
Two quick things, um, one, I just wanted to follow up on filling committee vacancies. We had talked about the charter committee vacancy at a minimum and I didn't know if there were any others that were on the docket. Just to check on timing.
I don't know.
Okay. Uh, and then, and then to bring up, um, something from a year ago, facility tours.
Would you like me to do attempt four to schedule those? I'm happy to.
I'm, I'm still interested.
I will do some doodle pulling. Ding ding, so exciting.
So I'm happy to report that the motion to adjourn is scheduled for nine fifty-five. We are, well, we, we were just nine thirty-five, so twenty minutes ahead, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
I think we need to discuss.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, thank you everyone.